Please take your seats. We're going to start in 30 seconds. Welcome to the board meeting of the William S. Hart Union High School District, April 19th, 2023. My name is Bob Jensen. I'm the board president. It's 7:02 PM. I'm going to report on our closed session action items. First of all, in closed session, the board approved the settlement agreement for the California Office of Administrative Hearings, case number 2022080741. The substance of the agreement is as follows. The district will reimburse parents for up to 25 hours of one-to-one academic tutoring and 20 hours of one-to-one speech and language services provided by a CDE-certified non-public agency. The total reimbursement shall not exceed $17,700. The district will reimburse parents in an amount not to exceed $4,500 for privately obtained independent educational evaluations. Thirdly, the district agrees to reimburse parents in an amount not to exceed $3,625 for students' after-school participation in one 16-week UCLA Peers program with a parent component. And fourth, and lastly, the district will pay $15,550 in attorney fees to the student's attorney. This was approved in closed session. The vote was five to zero in the unanimous. We will now reestablish our quorum for tonight's meeting. Debbie?
Mr. Messina?
Here.
Dr. Moore?
Present.
Mrs. Starlee?
Here.
Mr. Webb?
Present.
Mr. Jensen?
Present.
And student board member.
Thank you, Debbie. We do have a full quorum tonight. Next on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance, and I've asked Rich Gutierrez, Assistant Principal at Hart High School and former outstanding athlete at Saugus High School in our school district several years ago, to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Rich?
Mr. Jensen, a point of order. Aren't we supposed to ratify the?
Yes, we are.
Okay.
My mistake.
Just so somebody doesn't call us out later. Thank you.
We do have one more item on our closed session agenda to take care of.
Move to ratify student expulsion report number 22/23-23, 22/23-24, 22/23-25, 22/23-26, 22/23-27, 22/23-28, 22/23-29, and 22/23-30.
Second?
Motion by Dr. Moore, second by Mrs. Starlee, to approve the ratifications of the eight student expulsion reports that were named by Dr. Moore. All in favor?
Aye.
Student board member?
Aye.
And the chair says aye. Thank you, Mr. Messina, for reminding me of that. So now we'll move on to the Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Gutierrez?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Rich. All right, next on the agenda is approval of the agenda for tonight's meeting.
So moved.
Motion by Mrs. Starlee, second by?
Second.
Mr. Webb. All in favor to approve the agenda for tonight's meeting?
Aye.
Aye.
Student board member?
Aye.
And the chair says aye. Thank you. Next is approval of the minutes. We have four minutes, February 9th, 15th, and March 1st.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Starlee, second by Mr. Messina, to approve the minutes of the February 9th special meeting and the February 15th and March 1st regular meeting minutes. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Student board member?
Aye.
And the chair says aye. Okay, we're going to move on to recognitions by the board. We have two outstanding and accomplished athletic groups here today, and it's exciting to have you all here. We appreciate your coming. And the first will be the Hart Girls Soccer Team. Mr. Crawford's going to make the introductions.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and thank you for this opportunity, President Jensen, Superintendent Mr. Coleman, and the rest of the board. Tonight, yes, we have two outstanding teams here tonight to be recognized. First, the 2023 Hart Varsity Girls Soccer Team. Not one, not one, but two titles. First, in a torrential rainstorm at COC, this team earned the title of CIF Southern Section Division II Champions, beating Harvard Westlake 1-0. The Girls Soccer Team then went on to capture the title of CIF Southern California Divisional II Regional Champions in dominant fashion, beating San Marcos 4-2. They could have gone to state, in my mind, and won that, but in soccer, that's where it ended. As you know, to win in soccer, you have to score more goals than the other team. But what else can help is an incredible defense. And if the other team can't score, it takes pressure off the offense, and this team is historical in the way they kept the other team out of the net. During their 19-2-5 campaign, including being undefeated in Foothill League play, they scored 79 goals and allowed only 13, including 17 shutouts. This is probably one of the greatest soccer seasons in our district schools, both boys and girls. So tonight, we honor and congratulate the 2023 Hart High Girls Soccer Team. Here to talk more about this amazing squad, head coach Brett Croft.
Thank you, guys, for having us. We got a small representation tonight of the girls. We're back in full swing of club season, so a lot of girls training tonight, and you can see by my attire, that's where I came from as well. So appreciate you guys having us here. We appreciate the support of the district and our school. The girls really put on a historic season and was truly remarkable. The game in the rain, I don't know if you guys were able to be there, but?
I was there. I got wet, like, really wet.
I don't think I've ever seen a game like that in my career, and so pretty awesome for them to fight through that. So really proud of them and glad that we can honor them tonight. So thank you for having us. Okay, do you want to just go them one by one quick, or do you want me to call them one by one? Okay. Laura Brennan? Go shake their hands. Riley Phelps? Macy Edmund? Charlotte Curtis? Giselle Monteforte? Abigail Ruiz? Stephanie Perez? Krista Ventura? And Hallie Hybert?
Well, the Foothill League had an incredible season in the Hart District, and not only did we have two, one, excuse me, state champion, I'm looking ahead already, but we had two. Because now we move on to the sport of basketball, where we have the chance to recognize the 2023 Valencia Boys Basketball Team, who also captured not only a CIF Southern Section Title, but also a state title. This is a team that gained momentum through the season. After finishing tied for second in Foothill League, the Vikings were determined to enter playoffs as the team to beat. And they did just that. In a tight game against St. Bonaventure, the Vikings won 65-62 to earn the title of Southern Section Division IV AA Champions. But these Vikings were just getting started. The team entered the CIF State Tournament, where they destroyed the competition, winning their five games by an average of 24 points, culminating in an 89-59 win against Half Moon Bay in the Golden One Arena in Sacramento to win the California Division State or Division Four State Championship. This marks one of the biggest turnarounds in state high school history. After winning only five games last year, the 2023 Vikings won 27 games this year en route to the state crown. We honor and congratulate the 2023 Valencia Viking Boys Basketball Team, and here to talk more about this incredible squad, head coach Bill Bedgood.
All right. Thanks so much for having us out here tonight. Super excited. Congratulations to the Hart Girls. I guess winter sports was good for the district this year. This was an exciting team to coach. It's kind of a historic year. I think Mr. Crawford did a great job kind of summing up. I won't, I was only going to talk for maybe an hour or so, so if you're comfortable. But yeah, it was, it was a lot of fun coaching this team. He mentioned a key thing, that we had only won five games the year before. At one point, we finished the year 27-10. At one point, we were 7-9. So we were coming out of, you know, Christmas break tournaments, and we had a losing record, and we kind of looked within ourselves. I had all the guys write like, kind of like New Year's resolutions, but regarding like the team and just how they're going to approach the second part of the season. And from January 1st through the state playoffs, we went 20-1. So just so proud of these guys. Okay, so here are our players. Mason Grant? Kai Davis? Kai was second team all CIF. Tanner Stradley? Ryan Majir? Elijah A.J. Wilkerson? Jaden Ayres? Dabe Princewill? Michael Kazarianz? Adrian Halbuena? Joseph Polaski? Bryce Bedgood? Bryce was also all CIF. Maurice Pitts? Thank you.
And real quick, before everybody takes off, there's one thing I failed to mention. Also, along with everything that you had just said, and the coach said, who was CIF, all CIF with Valencia Boys Basketball, Hart Girls Soccer, Riley Phelps was CIF Player of the Year. Had physical growing things. Yeah. Like, dude, you're wearing shorts for now on. I can't afford to keep by your pants.
Well, congratulations again to Hart High Soccer and Valencia High Basketball for a wonderful representation of our school district and our league. We're going to move on now in the agenda. Next item is our One Heart Award. Mr. Coleman?
Thank you. Just by way of brief introduction, we have established a tradition here in the Hart District of honoring those individuals who represent one of our four core values, that of care and community, courage, and creativity. Got it. The idea behind these core values are, we call them aspirational values, because these are the values that we want to point our young men and women to, so that when they graduate, they say, these are the kinds of people that you should emulate, because they represent these values. And so we like to take a moment in some of these public meetings to especially, to significantly set aside time to say thank you and recognize those people who have demonstrated and who are modeling those things for our community. Tonight, we have a special guest, and I'm not going to give the name. I'll allow Dr. Moore and Mr. Webb, I believe, to share their One Heart Award.
Wonderful. Thank you, Mr. Coleman. Tonight, I have the pleasure of giving out a One Heart Award in the area of community. And this person exemplifies so many of the values that we are using for our One Heart Award, but in particular, community is one that stands out above all else with her and her work. I have had the pleasure of working with Amy Daniels for over a decade. And in this time working with her, I've just seen how much she gives to our community, how much she serves, how much she cares, how much she supports students, how much she supports us here in the Hart District. A little bit about Amy. Amy began her career as a kindergarten teacher, and that turned into a project manager in the tech industry in New England. She moved to Santa Clarita and started raising a family and began using her management skills in the nonprofit arena, volunteering for many local organizations. And I know she doesn't like to be talked about, but Amy, you are a star. And she served on site councils, she served on advisory committees, the district advisory committee, and the Parent Communication Council, and led the Hart High School Foundation for seven years. Some of the highlights of her tenure, there, there are many, but she's spoken on behalf of public education in front of then-Governor Jerry Brown in 2012. She's brought Holocaust survivors to speak to students. She created an annual speaker series to serve local families. She's promoted free electronic waste events through, in partnership with the city. And following all of that, she was tapped by this district, very smartly, very wisely so, to be the founding executive director of the Wish Education Foundation, which is our district's education foundation. Through Amy's work, we've been able to do things for the students and classrooms in this district that we would never have dreamed of being able to do, because tax dollars don't provide enough support for supporting our students in the way in which we can through Amy's work and leading the foundation. Her goal with the foundation is to ensure that every student, no matter their passions or challenges, they all deserve the tools to success needed in the classroom. So with that, I would ask Mr. Webb to join me down below as we congratulate Amy Daniels. Congratulations, Amy.
All right. Thank you again, Amy, for all your hard work and efforts over the years. We really appreciate it. Next on the agenda is our communications section. First is board member reports. We'll start with Mrs. Starlee. Linda, do you have a report?
I do. Thank you and welcome. Yesterday, I was able to attend the awarding of classified workers' special recognitions. It's great to see our classified employees honored. Schools don't work without classified employees, and we know it. And as a teacher, every teacher and every principal knows that without the classified employees, schools don't run. It was wonderful to see them all honored yesterday. Last month, I was able to attend Castaic High School's open house. They're preparing for their first graduation. I'm so excited for them. They're excited. Principal Ferry and his gang are going to celebrate, and it's going to be wonderful. Monday, attended the Hart-hosted SCV Trustee Association meeting. We invite all members from the boards that are in the Santa Clarita Valley to discuss and their superintendents, excuse me, Mr. Coleman, the superintendents, and we discuss what our feeder schools are doing, and we go up to and through COC's board. This association has been going on for over 25 years. It's very rewarding, and it's, it's very helpful to listen to what other schools are doing, and they've solved a problem, and that problem may be the same problem that another district's having, and we're able to share and not reinvent the wheel each time. At the beginning of the month, I was able to watch teachers and classified staff receive Teacher and Classified Persons of the Year awards. Tomorrow night, it's Rio Norte's open house, and I intend to go with shoes this time. I'm pleased to see our agenda this evening is awarding, was awarded over $2.5 million in incentives, accepting the donations for digital keyboard from Pamela Bashram and router from Viper Cable, Inc. for Castaic High School. We have so many contributors to the district that go unmentioned. It's in our consent calendar. I'm not going to read them all, but please do look at all the people that give. Some are just individuals, some are companies, and they give various amounts of money to different schools or to the district. We have three scholarship winners from Saugus High School, Karine Gomez, Hannah Watson, and Sanjay, I'm going to mess this up, Shrikantam, no, S-R-I-K-A-N-T-H. And that's the end of my report. Mr. Jensen, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Starlee. Mr. Webb?
Thank you, Mr. President, District Cabinet, Mr. Coleman, and Public. That's with us. I had the pleasure of attending last month the STN Convention in Long Beach, California. I know that we are going to recognize the students, but I do want to just say it was an amazing event for the students. We had several of our high schools and a junior high attend, and many of them placed, I do want to just, West Ranch TV received Best Daily News Show for STN, and Castaic High School won Best Cinematography and Best Art Direction for a short film that they had submitted. Mr. Coleman joined us on the awarding of all these events, and it was just amazing to see how many times the Hart District schools were recognized. But I don't want to take too much, because I know we're going to recognize them at another board meeting. I had the pleasure of giving a One Heart Award to a student at Castaic High School on Monday, Broden Weeks, who is a sophomore in the Good Morning Castaic Program. I awarded it for community, because this individual takes it upon himself to take the students from Castaic Middle School and have them tour the studio, and really does a lot to promote the program at Castaic. In addition, I gave a One Heart Award to Coach Dean for the boys' freshman volleyball. He is an example of caring. He leads those students through such an amazing way to have them honor the opponents that they're playing, but also honor and respect themselves. And having worked with freshmen for a number of years, that's no easy feat. So I know how much he does to support the, the students. And with that, that's the end of my report, Mr. Jensen.
Thank you, Mr. Webb. Dr. Moore?
Thank you, Mr. Jensen. Good evening and hello, everyone. Just a few quick items. I wanted to make sure that, and we'll talk about this a little bit later, but with just recognizing Amy for the One Heart Award, I wanted to make sure that you are all planning to come to the Wine on the Roof event next Thursday on April the 27th. We would love to see you there. There are still some tickets available. Again, it's next Thursday, April the 27th. We'll talk a little bit more about Wish later. I had the pleasure and honor of attending the Many Families One Community event last Saturday at Golden Valley High School. It's in its seventh year, and this is a first year post-pandemic. It's a wonderful, wonderful event where we bring together La Mesa, Sierra Vista, Canyon High School, Golden Valley High School, and the Sulfur Springs Schools to have an event that puts on workshops. We have a resource fair. There are probably over 50 different tables at the resource fair, but workshops for parents from kindergarten all the way through college with different information to help you make sure that your child has a successful education. Very well attended. It also focuses on highlighting the arts. We had the choir from the elementary school district, our junior high, La Mesa Junior High, and Golden Valley High School. They sung a song together that, my understanding, they practiced one time, and it was amazing, absolutely amazing. And then they all sang several other songs, but it was a wonderful event. And I encourage you, this again happens every year, to look out for this next year. Many Families One Community, muchas familias una comunidad. And we also will be preparing for community conversations next Monday, the next Tuesday, the 25th, at La Mesa Junior High School at 6 o'clock, focused on school culture and climate. Love for you to be there as well. And then we'll be celebrating teachers the following Friday, on the 28th, at our teacher tribute. The wonderful work of our teachers is continually seen with what our students are able to do, but we get to celebrate them at the teacher tribute with all the districts in Santa Clarita Valley. So looking forward to that. So looking forward to that. And, Mr. Jensen, that's my report.
Thank you, Dr. Moore. Mr. Messina?
Okay. Amy Daniels, you were on the founding group that started the Wish Foundation, as was I, and I remember when you came on there. And from what I'm hearing, your energy level hasn't stopped. I don't know how you're doing it, but God, God bless you for doing that sincerely. And I know you have the kids at heart. You always have. So I just wanted to throw my two and a half cents in there as well. To the classified, I missed yesterday's meeting. I had a family issue. I don't want you to think that I didn't really care for what you were doing, but you are part of the lifeblood of what keeps this district rolling, and I recognize that. So thank you for that as well. You know, yesterday was the 80th anniversary of, if I mispronounce this, you can correct me, Kristalnok. Six million-plus Jews died in the Holocaust, and I think it's important that we remember that and not just let it go away. What it was called was the Warsaw Ghetto Uprising. Over almost a million Jews were still in concentration camps when they were released. 15,000, I'm sorry, not a million, not a million. There was almost 800,000 Jews were in there, and over 15,000 of them died shortly thereafter of malnutrition. And one of the things that they do every year is there's a two-minute time of silence where all the cars stop, people get out of their cars at reverence for two minutes. And it wasn't millions, but think about what went down at Pearl Harbor and other incidents that we've had in this country. So I just want to make sure that our young people don't forget what happened in the Holocaust. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. I just wanted to make a mention or two of a couple of things. One is Amy, I did want to thank you for all your hard work. I've known you for a long time. You've been instrumental at Hart High School even before the Wish Foundation, and you have spent so much time in the community and for our schools and our kids that I really do appreciate all you've done and look forward to many more years working with you. So thank you very much again. And Janice Dannington, congratulations on your Classified Folks of the Year, and I was not able to make that yesterday as well. I'm a CPA, and so my tax deadline, I was working late last night. But congratulations to all that you guys do, and thank you for all your service, and we appreciate everything that the classified folks do here in our district. Student Board Member, do you have a report?
Yes, I do. Thank you. So I have tons of student news for you tonight. First and foremost, it's officially prom season, which may not seem like a big deal to a lot of underclassmen, but to juniors and seniors, we're all extremely excited. Valencia and Castaic had their prom last weekend, and it was a huge success. A lot of kids were posting about it on social media, and I know the Castaic president talked about the energy that was at prom and how this was their first prom, and she said that they made history, and they're damn right proud of it. So that's been amazing. Furthermore, focusing on Castaic, they are planning their first Powderpuff game for May. They're really excited, and they're opening it up to juniors and seniors. Golden Valley's volleyball team made playoffs for the first time in a decade. So we're really excited. We don't have the schedule yet, but our volleyball team has been doing amazing. As of recently, I believe we're top three in the district, and we're very, very excited about that. Golden Valley is also hosting their second Week of Kindness this week, so we do two a year. And today actually was our Diversity Day, which is a spin on multicultural day. So what will happen after starting this year is, first semester, we'll have a multicultural day, which is a day dedicated to celebrating different cultures. And then second semester, following that, will be our Diversity Day. As stated before, Golden Valley's saying is diversity is our strength and unity is our goal, and we feel as if this, this event, this celebration, is something that we'll really hone in on that and highlight our diversity and highlight how beautiful it is. Furthermore, following some, following some of the talks about campus culture and inclusivity, multiple high school principals have sent out PSA videos talking about hate speech and the consequences that come from it. And then I did want to echo the community conversations, which is occurring April 25th, 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. at La Mesa Junior High. All students are welcome, staff are welcomed, as well as parents are welcomed, even just community members in general. I think it's a, despite the issues that have happened in the past, I'm glad to see that the district is responding to them, and we're taking progressive and direct steps to try to achieve something better. Thank you. That's my report.
Thank you, Dani. Okay, we'll move on now to our Employee Association Leadership Reports. President John Mekes from Hart District Teachers Association.
Good evening, School Board, Student Board Member, President Jensen, Superintendent Coleman and staff. Thanks for having me as usual. I did write some stuff out, and I decided that, you know what, we're just getting back into the swing of things, so I'm going to keep it real short, and I just Xed out two pages. So you're welcome. I did want to say, first, I wanted to express our thanks to the classified staff. It is awesome, their extra efforts in finishing up all the changes to our salary schedules made our spring break a lot better. And I do understand that our classified people work on a different calendar, but I do hope you guys got a little bit of a break during the time off, or maybe just us not being here was a break for you guys. You know, we all welcome the break, but we are back now, and at this juncture, we're kind of in a duality. We're striving to keep the focus through the end, the final stretch of the school year, but we do begin in earnest our planning for next year. So we do have that duality. And so I just wanted to say that, you know, we've gone through some tough times. We are regaining some normalcy, but we know there is some catching up to do. And so we must plan with the understanding that new and more does not mean better. In the end, what we need is, we need continuity, consistency, and care across the board with students and staff. And I look forward to a strong finish to the year, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, John. Next up is Janice Dannington, California School Employees Association, Chapter 349.
Good evening, President Jensen, Board Members, Superintendent Coleman, Cabinet, and guests. So tonight, I wanted to say thank you to all of you who attended the classified recognition last night. Your presence and participation was deeply appreciated, so thank you from all of us. I just have a few updates from CSEA. We're going to try it again for our barbecue, and that'll be May 16th, and we'll be sending invites out to all of you, so I hope you can attend or stop by. And then on May 18th, CSEA and the district will meet for the 23-24 negotiations, and as always, we look forward to positive results. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Janice. Okay, next on the agenda is our school site report for Valencia High School. But before Principal Dotromont comes up, we do have two speaker cards on this topic, so we'll hear our speakers first, and then we'll all introduce Principal Dotromont. Our first speaker is Greg Borish.
My name's Greg Borish. I've been a math teacher at Hart High School for 14 years. I was hired by the great Colin Nielsen back in 2009. I want to share a little with you tonight about what makes Hart a special place for me. I can spend my time talking about some of our academic programs. We have an enormously popular AP Psychology program, a very rigorous AP US History program, and perhaps one of the greatest AP Computer Science programs in the country. But to me, the people who make Hart High School great. I've taught over 2,000 students in my career at Hart, and almost every single one of them has been respectful, polite, interesting, and nourishing for me. Most teachers will tell you that students are the best part of the job, and they're right, and I still look forward to seeing mine every single day when I come into school. Every year, I have students who astonish me with their creativity, intelligence, and humor, and I have plenty of stories and quotes that I know I'll never forget. I've kept in contact with many of my former students as they've graduated college, gotten jobs, started families, and made an impact on our community and our world. The adults at Hart are just as wonderful. The teachers and staff on campus have always been uniformly warm, welcoming, and happy to lend a helping hand. When I started my career, I was so grateful for the mentorship and patience so many of my colleagues provided. We deeply care about each other, and I've made many lasting friendships with my coworkers, many of whom are still here today. Perhaps the greatest compliment I can give to the community at Hart is how many of our teachers and other employees are former Hart students who have come back to teach at their old stomping ground. I don't have the exact numbers, but it feels like almost a third of my colleagues are former Hart students, and it's terrific to see them returning to a school where they've learned so much and grown so much as people. So it's a wonderful place, and thank you all so much for your time.
Thank you, Greg. Next up is Catherine Smith.
Good evening, Hart District Board Members. My name is Catherine Smith, and I have been a science teacher at Hart High School for the last 11 years. Tonight, you'll hear from our principal about things like how we have been discussing our grading practices and providing a support system for all of our students. I'd like to add a few more of the amazing things that are happening on Hart's campus. Our teachers are some of the brightest and most creative people I know. When the open AI chatbots like ChatGPT were released this winter, instead of shying away from a new technology, the professional development team at Hart had the courage to dive right into exploring lesson design applications and figuring out just how powerful or limiting these tools can be. As a staff, we've discussed the pros and cons of AI technology and branched out to an overall discussion surrounding the use of technology in general, especially with cell phones. I'm happy to say that we, as a staff, are pushing towards a school-wide cellphone policy in each classroom to help our students engage with one another and learn in person together without the distractions of social media. Our teachers have also really been upping their game to make our more challenging AP classes more appealing and welcoming to all of our students. I'm happy to report that our numbers of courageous students signing up for AP Science courses seems to be increasing percentage-wise, getting us back towards our pre-pandemic levels of rigor at our school. For example, our numbers of students signing up for AP Chemistry and AP Biology have both doubled for next year. I love working at Hart. My colleagues are like my family. They are some of the best in the business, and I can't imagine working anywhere else. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. All right. I have to make an apology. I referred to Hart High as Valencia High School. My kids went to Hart. I was enamored by their state championship at Valencia High School in basketball, because I played high school basketball, so, and I went to Valencia High's championship game at Miracosta High School. So anyway, my bad, my apologies. Forgive me. Without further ado, we have the Hart High School Principal Jason Dotromont, who will give a presentation tonight on Strategic Plan Focus Area Number One, Student Learning and Instruction. Jason, we're glad to have you here tonight with your red tie on and, and take it away, and you've got several of your assistants here, so please give it a go.
Thank you, President Jensen. You're just now apologizing, so, for the Valencia gaffe, but that's all right. Valencia, congratulations for their state championship as well, and as you saw, our Hart girls did an amazing job. I want to follow up on Danielle's comment. Our boys' volleyball team tonight just won a share of the Foothill League title, and we hope great things for them and CIF in the spring season as well. Also, I would be remiss, President Jensen, if you, you alluded to Amy Daniels earlier, and I know Dr. Nielsen was principal at Hart when Amy was the Hart Parent Organization President, but I, as assistant principal, got to work with her extensively. At that time, she became an expert at Blackboard Connect, which was our parent communication system, and I would just let her go into my office and make the calls for us. So it was fantastic. So congratulations, Amy. Thank you, Mr. Webb and Dr. Moore, for presenting the One Heart Award to her. Tonight, I get to talk to you all about Focus Area Number One in our strategic plan, and I brought our amazing administrative team. We are minus one right now because Ms. Glick is coming from our Dance Parent Meeting, our Dance Information Meeting at Hart High School. So we'll probably skip over hers and let her come at the end. If not, I'll cover it for her, because that's what we do. We're an amazing team, and I'm so happy to introduce you to them tonight. We're talking about Focus Area One, as I previously mentioned. 1.1 is to clarify and implement consistent, common assessment tools that monitor student progress. That's going to be from Ms. Jennifer Glick. Our second is foster and support equitable grading practices focused on learning. That's going to be from Ms. Liz Wilson. Our third is to provide a multi-tiered system of academic support for all students from Ms. Michelle Hernandez. And finally, our fourth will be how we utilize technology effectively to promote student engagement and support learning from Mr. Rich Gutierrez. And all of these, I just want to say, and I was absolutely blown away by what our two union reps at Hart High School, who are outstanding teachers in their own regard, had to say about Hart. That was completely unexpected, and I'm so grateful for teachers like them and the rest of our staff at Hart High School that make things go. So to talk about how they go, we're going to skip over number one real quick and have Ms. Wilson start us off with number two.
Good evening, Board, and yes, Catherine and Greg, amazing sentiment, including the teachers that all have graduated from there, two assistant principals also. Yeah, we have a lot of people that have graduated from Hart and have come back to Hart. So I am presenting something that was really interesting for me. When we went to, when in 2022, when we were getting course syllabi, we did an audit on them, and we collected them, and we ran through everything to measure it, and we presented it to the staff so they could see how we run across the school in our grading system. So 44%, 44 classes, 36% of the school uses the standard 60% weighting, and then the rest go down to 40%, and it varies across the board. And then for final exams across, again, across the classes, it's 10%, 15%, 20%. It's not equal, it's different, but we have the autonomy as teachers to do that. And then for our different weighting scales of each class, there's 40 different iterations of it, from two, two weighting scales up to five weighting scales. And then I gave you the breakdown, projects, assignments, tests, and quizzes. So it was really interesting to share that data, and it was interesting to see the staff see the data, because the staff doesn't realize that. I could be working right next door to somebody, and they have a different weighting scale than I do. So I thought it was a great thing to share, something to be eye-opening for our staff to allow collaboration time, so our staff can get together and get more aligned with each other within departments. And then we want to run another audit in '23 and '24. There you go. Thank you.
Up next is Ms. Hernandez.
Good evening, Board. Sorry, I'm the short one of the team. And thank you again for Greg and Catherine. Thank you so much. That was very sweet. And being new to Hart and being new to the district, I have to say that you guys do make everybody feel like family, so I really want to thank you for that. You've definitely welcomed me with open arms. So I have the multi-tiered academic success report for all students. So we have library nights on Tuesdays and Thursday evenings for all students to attend. We have teachers that are there in all subjects to tutor, to help the students with raising academic scores, or just being able to actually understand curriculum if they're not succeeding in class. I personally have gone there many times and have seen many teachers with small groups of students that give them the extra attention that they need to have them be successful. And let me tell you, it's a great environment to go in there, especially and see them at night, because they're there from 6:00 to 8:00 every Tuesday and Thursday night. And there's a system in place where the kids have to scan in and come in, and they're held accountable, and the teachers know that they come, and, you know, hopefully, the data will show that they, that it is making a difference for the students. Teachers are also providing office hours for students in the morning times, so they can come and get extra support as well for the students that cannot make it on Tuesday and Thursday nights. We also have our Student Support Specialist, which is one of our counselors that is assigned to our students that provides the extra support, whether it's academic attendance support or just counseling support as well. We actually, we have our Pride Center as well. Our Pride Center is basically our McKenney-Vento Act or our Homeless Education Act, where the students can come in and get additional services. Those could be academic services, those could be financial services, those could also be clothing, moral support. I mean, it's amazing to see what happens when you go into the Pride Center. We also have our Wellness Center, which is also provided for students that can be, can be referred to from any teacher or administrator. And the Wellness Center, it's just, it's so nice to go in and sit there and just take a breath. Sometimes kids need a restart if they've had a bad morning or a bad afternoon, and they just walk in with open arms, and it's great. We also have a social worker, and our social worker is not in the negative aspect of what most people feel. When they hear social worker, they automatically think DCFS. That's not the case. Our kids run to our social worker. Can we, we need to talk to you, we need this, we need that. So that is our report on our multi-tiered system. Thank you.
And Mr. Gutierrez.
Thank you, Board, for allowing me to come up here and speak. Catherine and Greg and Ms. Yale, Ms. Monteleone, you guys coming up here fired me up. Absolutely amazing. Working with you guys is truly special, so to recognize you guys as well. I get to present on the utilizing technology effectively to promote student engagement and support learning across HART High School. One of the things, when I was kind of researching this aspect, I actually felt it was something we do within the Williams HART School District, I think, comprehensively. It's tied to our strategic plan. It's something we do everywhere I've been as a teacher, administrator, coach, whatever it may be. One of those aspects is one-to-one technology. When you talk about students, every single particular student within our district has access to a Google Chromebook. If they don't have one, we can, you know, get them one. They can use it, they can keep it. One of the things into, it's ironic, Ms. Davidson being here tonight and working for the Wish Foundation, that particular program in itself, even dating back prior to the pandemic, that one-to-one technology just pretty much exploded across our district, and it provided every single student access to those particular measures, particularly during the pandemic when we went to Zoom. As far as Google Chromebooks, we have one in every particular classroom, and that I know not only goes at HART but across the district. Whenever we have, you know, any type of event as well, we have Chromebooks that are available that we can actually transition back and forth and provide those as far as access is concerned, whether it's our library nights or potheress union of those that we have that actually come on campus as well. It's amazing to see how many Chromebooks are available. And just to reiterate what I just stated concerning the Wish Foundation partnership, untouchable. I'm proud to see it across the district, and for every student to have access, that's, you know, unquestionable. As far as platform access, I don't think people realize how much is actually available, if it's not only necessarily teachers but administrators and everybody. We have Google Classroom. Obviously, we have Apex Learning. We've explored Naviance. When I was a special education instructor, we lived within the Naviance world, you know, actually providing students access to like learn about career planning, auditory learning. It could, it's just, it's so vast. Canva, whenever we're developing specific graphic arts programs, EdPuzzles, Kami, Grade Transfer, Peer Deck, NearPod, Padlet, Kuta Works, ListenWise, iXL, TurnItIn, BrainPop, iReady. I mean, the list goes on and on. NTW, Sunde, which is an exceptional program, if you're unaware of it. It's a reading program for learners that are continuing, like are below basic students within special education, they're still learning enunciation and things of that nature. And we even have those within the high school setting. Also included, Scholastic. I know it's overwhelming, but even as a teacher, when I was exploring these particular measures, it's untouchable how much is available to us, not only at HART High School but across the district. So thank you very much, everybody.
All right. And finally, since Ms. Glick couldn't be here, I'll share with you on One Point One, how we clarify and implement consistent, common assessment tools that monitor student progress. We recently went through a WASC full visit. We have, we were fully accredited. One of the things that the WASC Committee talked about, though, is something that we could do to enhance our classroom instruction, and that is to have common formative assessments. And that's something we really started the year off with our PD team, our professional development, what we did with our staff, and really have been working towards that all year long in this Focus Area Number One, to have a common formative assessment. And what those are is where subject alikes, so let's say, two different algebra teachers across campus would give a common formative assessment, something they could check up with students to make sure they're getting it before they get the summative assessment at the end of the course or the end of the unit, to where they can make sure they're on the same page, students are getting the same instruction, and moving along through the curriculum properly. So we've done an outstanding job of that with our staff and our students, and I'm really hopeful to see it pay off by the end of the year. I know Ms. Glick had much more to say on that, but I'll keep it at that. I'm going to wrap up by sharing with you that everything we do at HART High School has a purpose, and it's all directed towards our strategic plan. We started this year off as being One Heart. We made that a mantra at heart, every student opportunity ready. And with that, going into the strategic plan, that leads right into our school plan for student achievement, which is the SIPSA, which is our, what every school needs to do now, but as a Title I school, what we've done for a number of years, and making sure our school goals align with where we're putting our Title I dollars. And so that leads right into WASC and what we're doing and what we were able to show from, with, to the WASC Committee and everything that we're doing at HART, how that leads, everything leads back up to our strategic plan. At that time, we didn't have one, but it certainly does now. At the time, we did have LCAP, and we still have LCAP, and with the highest English learner population in the district, a lot of our LCAP money for the district goes towards that at HART High School with our EL strategies and support that we do get tremendously from the district, which leads into our school goals, which you heard at the beginning of the year, starting off as Catherine Smith talked about in our PD team and what we've been able to do progressing through that through the year. And that leads full circle back to our classroom goals and the focus area we talked about today in student learning and instruction. So we're extremely grateful to have the student staff, parents, and administrators at HART High School and counselors, Ms. Monteleone is here, to make sure that everything is successful and we are leading all as One Heart. So thank you for your time today, letting us share, and if you have any questions, we'll be happy to answer those for you now.
Any questions, Board, or comments?
Thank you very much. This was a great report. Thank you.
Thank you, Principal Dotromont. Liz, Michelle, Rich, thank you for coming. Really appreciate your remarks. Great job. Keep up the good work. Wonderful to hear from you. Okay, we're going to move on now to our special items. We have one special item tonight, which is a Wish Education Foundation update. Mr. Coleman, are you going to introduce this?
Yes, I will introduce. I'm happy. Amy, please come join us, if you would, and I know that, I didn't mean to steal your thunder, Dr. Moore. Would you like to introduce?
So I would like to introduce Ms. Amy Daniels, who, as you see on the agenda, will be giving the Wish Education Foundation update this evening. Ms. Daniels.
Thank you. Hi again. You know, I love and support all the schools, but my three boys went to HART, so go HART. And every time they get together or even talk on the phone, they're still talking about Borish. Constantly, you're coming up. It's amazing. I just want to let everybody know that Wish's funding focus is steamed with an emphasis on student wellness, and what we fund changes from month to month as needs rise. In these past two months, Wish has been busy with the following program support: supporting our wellness centers across the district, including renewable resources at Arroyo Seco and West Ranch, and district-wide resources through the district wellness coordinator. We are working to ensure equitable access for students district-wide. Special education programs, specifically the HART Games, supporting special ed students district-wide, and funding living skills programs by providing button makers to enhance work skills in the transition program at HART High. Literacy programs, such as the annual student-authored anthology at Bowman High School. And in the past year, Wish has seen an increase in student demand for music classes. We received additional, an additional grant from the city of Santa Clarita for our wellness through music program, and we're in the process of distributing those funds. And this is in addition to this academic year's supportive music programs that included nearly $42,000 in items needed district-wide. It should be noted that Wish never decides what's needed in our schools, and rather, we work with our teachers, directors, and administrators to determine what's best for their programs, and every purchase by Wish has oversight. So Wish doesn't provide any money. Instead, we provide the tools needed for success in the classroom. We're constantly working to provide valuable assistance to our HART District families in many different areas, and in fact, we just completed the final webinar of the year for our college-bound webinar series, this one geared towards students in the visual and performing arts and those interested in applying to highly rejected schools. So look for more events next year. We're adding some to our calendar that will provide access to our students and the resources that they need, including college-bound students, women in business events, and always providing access to our underserved students. Just so that you know, we raise every single penny ourselves through fundraisers and grants, and every penny stays in our district to support student programming. Every student since 2012 has benefited from our support. And Dr. Moore mentioned our event. I know several of you will be there next week. I hope everybody gets on to wisheducationfoundation.org and signs up for our newsletter and checks out all the good that we're doing. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Amy.
And thank you again.
Thank you. All right. Next is our public comments section of the board meeting. If you would like to address the governing board on a matter that is within the board's jurisdiction, we ask that you kindly complete a request to address the board form and submit it to the secretary to the board or place it in the wire basket before we begin public comments. Please do not approach the dais when making your comments. Please address the board and not address the audience. The board president will limit your comments to a maximum of two minutes. Please do not be offended when your comments are ended after two minutes, as this helps us move the meeting along in a timely fashion and ensures equal time for all speakers. I'm going to ask you to line up in anticipation of your time to speak. Please prepared, please be prepared to speak as soon as you are called to the microphone. We will begin the clock when the board president says you may begin. The president may adjust the public comment time based on the number of speakers. This is the general public comments section. If you plan to speak on an agenda item, you'll be given the opportunity to do so when the item is under discussion by the board. Our first speaker is Rebecca Hindman, followed by Diane Zimmerman and Cindy. So Diane and Cindy, if you would please line up over by the counter, and we'll hear first from Rebecca. You may begin.
Good evening. My name is Rebecca Hindman, and I'm a parent in the district. I am here tonight to thank the district, especially Mr. Coleman, for his prompt response to the public, to the public at large during the recent swatting event at Saugus High School. This was an area-wide trauma-inducing event, and the district's response was swift and informative and helped reduce panic. Thank you. I stand here tonight with my mom's Demand Action shirt because Mr. Messina thinks we are insurrectionists. We are not. We are parents who want to make a difference with peaceful protests and legislative actions. An insurrectionist is someone who illegally breaks into a government building by breaking doors and windows, leaving feces, and stealing laptops. I stand here tonight to question Mr. Messina as to why he claims to be inclusive of all students and yet perpetuates hate for profit with his radio show and post-celebrating Detransition Day. How is it that a naval admiral can support a transgender woman in a naval role and talk about building a cohesive team based on dignity and respect to all that serve, and yet you cannot be respectful to those that you serve? I stand here again, asking for equality instead of being focused on the issues like the fights that are happening in our district's bathrooms, the lack of access our students have to these bathrooms because of destructive behavior, or the increased fighting happening on our campuses in general. I stand here to speak out about behavior that you, the board, allow to go on in this room that is abhorrent. Students and speakers have been called bigoted and hateful names. Speakers have been attacked here and in public with lies and physical threats. The board needs to set the example and follow the rules for speakers and the audience. You, I'm just going to end there. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Diane Zimmerman, followed by Cindy, and followed by Santa Rivera. Diane, you may begin.
Hard act to follow. Agree with 10% of it. First of all, I'd just like to state that you, school board members and the city council members, are not to blame for the decisions you're making. The voters who kept voting most of you back in are responsible for decades of misspending and bad management by the majority of you, not all of you. Most voters, including me, did not look very far into the things before voting the incumbents back into office. Our fault, not yours. Hopefully, the lesson being learned is not too late to reverse so much recklessness and unnecessary spending. Please be awake. A lot of us have been very concerned, in fact, the previous speaker extremely concerned as well, about the child trafficking, child abuse, child inappropriate treatment by some teachers. I'm finding out through investigation, for decades, teachers have been found guilty, not guilty, and most, by the way, most teachers, I would say eighty-five, ninety percent, maybe more, are wonderful. They belong teaching children, they're dedicated, that's what they're giving their lives for. But the majority of those that are found guilty of indiscreet or improper conduct with a child and moved to another school or another, another district altogether, or a different community like the Valley to Santa Clarita or Burbank to the Valley, that is unbelievably awful that you, anyone would allow a teacher who has abused a child and been proven of it to continue. And as for Joe Messina, he's one of the best people I've ever seen or known as far as love for children of no matter what.
Diane, your time is up. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Cindy, followed by Santa Rivera, followed by Nancy. You may begin.
I'm concerned on the negative impacts of the sex education being taught early in schools and the promotion of gender identity, that there is more than two genders. As a parent, I strongly believe that these radical ideologies are confusing and dangerous to our children's future. We must teach our children that there are only two genders, and other than that is a personal choice. It's up to the parents, not the schools or government, to dictate what values and beliefs their children are exposed to. You all continue to support these evil ideologies, which are biblically and scientifically not true. We need to stop this madness. Our children are in danger, and parent rights are being stripped away with the AB 665 bill going to the Senate. You wonder why California public schools are at a rapid decline. It's because parents are fed up with a radical ideology being pushed on their children. We all know the textbooks have hidden political agendas, along with evil sex ideologies that are harmful and dangerous for our kids. Stop bending and kneading to the progressives. As school board members, your responsibility is to protect and educate our children, but you're not fulfilling your duties. But yet you masquerade like you care. Well, maybe you do. If you do, then it's time to get back real education that provides for healthy futures. We need to prioritize our children's education above all else and provide them with the tools they need to succeed in life. I urge you to take action now and make the necessary changes to ensure that our schools are places of learning, growth, and safety. Our children's futures depend on it, and we are counting on you to do the right thing. Never forget, this is a battle of good versus evil, and which side are you on? Thank you.
Our next speaker is Santa Rivera, followed by Nancy, followed by Austin Wright. You may begin.
Good evening, everyone. I wanted to start off by saying social workers are not therapists. I don't want people to get confused, because there has been a change in that, and it was mentioned earlier in the report, I think it was from HART, that, you know, they're using social workers for children to use them as therapists. Maybe it's a tactic to save money, but make it very clear, social workers are not therapists, and parents should know if their children are talking to social workers. Thank you. I just wanted to make that comment. Now, it hasn't always been easy coming here to speak to you guys. I have felt ignored at times, mislabeled, and also even sometimes mistreated. But I keep coming back in the hopes that maybe something that one of us say, or that I say, will touch your heart or click somewhere in your brain, so that we can continue to move forward on literally protecting our children and allowing the parents' involvement to be open as it used to be when I was a kid. I understand that we are a growing and diverse community, and this includes different ideas that parents individually have and expect when it comes to the public education of our children. One topic that keeps coming up is equity. And my understanding, because there is a difference between equity and equality, my understanding, equality, treat others as you want to be treated. That starts at home. Again, parent involvement, very important. We need to teach our children, because how they behave in public has to do with what we do at home. That's very important. Equity, making accommodations for people that need, that are less fortunate, whether it's living situation, mental we do at home. That's very important. Equity, making accommodations for people that need, that are less fortunate, whether it's living situation, mental, physical, health, et cetera. So think about it. If we're teaching our children that they can expect to be treated a certain way so they can have special treatment...
Santa, your time is up. Thank you. Our next speaker is Nancy, followed by Austin Wright and Dr. Akash.
Good evening. Racism is a...
You may begin, please. Yes.
Racism is a form of discrimination and prejudice that divide people along racial lines. It creates a sense of us versus them that leads to tension, conflict, and even violence between different racial groups, and that is what some of you sitting here are guilty of. A few of you advocate for exclusionary policies and practices. This was clearly displayed when you stood with the NAACP Santa Clarita and chastised some girls, high school girls, who sang to London Yellow song, "I Hate N Word." Yet when your trustee refused to remove the derogatory Asian word from her public Facebook page, you did nothing. Do you even realize the harm and impact it does when you enforce racism for only one race and ignore others? You are the ones perpetuating systemic inequalities and creating barriers when you pick and choose what race you will defend and the ones you refuse to acknowledge. So when some of you sit up here and talk about promoting equity and inclusion, you are liars, and I will always be here to remind you. When I was growing up, I faced a lot of racism. I was bullied. A day didn't go by where I wasn't called some kind of derogatory name. I was kicked. I was punched. And you know what? I cried. But crying over a song? Give me a break. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Austin Wright, followed by Dr. Akash, and followed by Jody List Monteleone. You may begin.
Thank you. My name's Austin Wright. I have a son at the, at Castaic High School. I am bringing up an inappropriate book that contains pornographic explicit and imagery of self-harm throughout the book. This book is called Gender Queer, and it is one of the number-one banned books in America. This is, you can find this at the Castaic Library. Many parents and myself strongly feel this book and many other books found is not educational and should be removed from our school libraries. This material portrays many explicit materials and language such as tasting your own vaginal fluid, showing in detail transitioning women and men giving oral sex with explicit imagery that could be found in pornography and many unmoral, disturbing images. The list goes on and on, page by page, with this book, which, why, as parents, we do not want our children to be seeing this content. This content is an 18-plus age range. I believe this material that is available can result to unsafe sex, children making decisions they are not ready for at a young age, also making lifelong decisions that are irreversible. It can also lead to, most importantly, gender mutilation. Also, the term queer and gender queer can be considered in some LGBTQ communities as hate speech and homophobic, and homophobic racist terms. The solution to this would be provide materials that explain literature of the adverse effects such as puberty blockers and books to help teens move through puberty successfully without any invasive treatment or surgeries to educate the appropriate age group of irreversible surgeries that has caused transition to detransition individuals such as Chloe Cole and many others that have not had the spotlight in the media. We also should have clear understanding of what books we have in this library. If we are gonna provide the children with transitioning books and materials, the libraries also need to provide just as many books and materials of the harm and...
Austin, your time is up. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Dr. Akash, followed by Jody List Monteleone. Dr. Akash, you may begin.
Good evening, everybody. Due to COVID-19, when schools turned to virtual learning, cell phone use among kids increased for academics as well as entertainment. But now that schools have opened in person, the use of cell phones among kids has only increased astronomically. According to the Federal National Center for Education Statistics, by 2020, 77% of schools in United States have prohibited cell phones for non-academic use. We can do it, too. Kids have become habitual to the entertainment provided by phone, and social media algorithm is making sure that kids will remain glued to their devices. Kids use cell phones for video games, watching videos, and posting stuff on applications and social media, which provide virtual instant gratification with a super dopamine surge in their brains. Many of these kids have difficulty staying focused and paying attention for a reasonable time to complete a task. In math or any other academic performance, has taken a dive down. The scores on standardized tests, as we all know, are at a historical low. Kids have lost the art of verbal communication, and math and science are replaced by TikTok. So what should we do? I strongly suggest that students should be allowed to keep cell phones, but they need to be switched off and should be placed in their backpacks. They cannot use them in the school hours and can only use if prompted by the teacher for an academic reason. They must seek permission of teacher if they need to use it for a personal reason. Now, parents might want to communicate with their kids in emergency, and I'll be happy to address that if given an opportunity. I request the board to please take this matter very seriously and happy to answer any questions. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Our last speaker is Jody List Monteleone. You may begin.
Good evening, board members and district staff. I'm Jody List Monteleone. You haven't seen me since 2014, when I retired after 34 years in the district. In November, I was asked if I would sub at Hart for four weeks, but now I'll be there until the end of the year. I have all the seniors and having a great time with them. I was welcomed and offered assistance by an incredible team consisting of seven school counselors, a social worker, and a wellness counselor. I am so impressed by the work ethic and professionalism possessed by each team member. Team members put students first and are always seeking ways to improve their efficiency and connect with their students. They collaborate well as a team and help each other whenever needed. Each counselor brings unique talents to the team. They regularly communicate with each other and have professional weekly meetings that review the calendar and any needs that anyone may have for the upcoming weeks. Counselors follow a class for four years and get to fully know their students as they help them navigate their way to graduation. The guidance curriculum focuses on academic needs, career readiness, and social emotional concerns, and there is a coordinated plan for what is presented to students each year. Counselors, most of whom have been classroom teachers, lead classroom presentations, manage testing, and go on TV with Wellness Wednesday and a Minute with the Counselor on Thursdays. There is constant communication with students and their families through email and the counseling website that provides essential resources. No student falls through the cracks. This phenomenal team is led by Josh Novak, my former intern, and I couldn't be prouder seeing firsthand what a phenomenal counselor, tech wizard, and educational leader he has become. I believe the counseling department...
Jody, your time is up. Thank you very much for coming and speaking tonight. We're going to move on to our information items. Mr. President, I'd like some clarification, if I could get some, before we get too far ahead. Mr. Coleman, do we, as far as the book goes that they were mentioning, that we were mentioning, do we have a policy that addresses this? I don't know if you saw the pictures, but do we have a...
I did.
Okay. Because if we have a policy that addresses this and it made its way into the library, I'd like to know how, number one. And I gotta tell you, number two, is this could only be found in a XXX shop. I mean, it's not even the stuff you found behind the 7-Eleven counter with the wrapper on it.
Your question is timely. We are aware of the concern that has been expressed about this book, and actually, I had just asked for Dr. Vera to, to review our policy on that. So I think you brought along something?
Yeah, absolutely. So we actually have two policies and an admin regulation, one for the selection of instruction materials and library books, and the other for complaint process. Unfortunately, they're both from 1993, so we're in the process of reviewing and updating, and they probably should be separate and not together. As far as the process for selecting books, it goes through the teacher librarians with consultation with specific library journals. One specifically is noted in the policy, School Library Journal and Book List, and then it's approved by the, by the principal. So that, that's kind of the current process. There's also specific language in there about things to consider, such as the varying views and backgrounds of students on campus, among other things. Now, the complaint process for textbooks and then library books are also in there. Initial, the initial complaint would go to the site principal, who then convenes a committee, and it specifically states that the committee would have a teacher, department chairperson, the principal, a parent. I think that's it. They then review the book with regard to the philosophy of the district, the professional opinions of educators and other authorities, the objectives of the materials, the objections in the complaint, and then determine if it supports a curriculum, the appropriateness of it, and the age level, which I think the gentleman brought up, the, the age factor as well. So those are some of the things that go to the consideration. There's a written report that comes out of that complaint, and then if there's an appeal, actually to my office for Level Two, which we get together, a district committee, and then there's a third level that could be appealed to the superintendent. But again, these are from 1993, when there are much different concerns and issues, and so we're reviewing the policy now and look forward to bringing a new process to the board in the near future. But this is what we have right now.
All right. So we're, I hope we're looking at updating the policy. I think that's what I heard, correct?
We are, yes.
All right. And, and I really, you know, you don't have to tell me tonight. I really like to know how this made it on the shelf in one of our libraries. Okay. Thank you. All right. Thank you. Okay, we're gonna move on to our information items. First is our strategic plan update on Focus Area Five, Communication and Collaboration. We do have one speaker on this. We'll have our speaker first, and then Mr. Coleman will introduce the topic. Speaker is Santa Rivera.
Santa. Not Santa.
All right. You may begin.
Perfect. Thank you. So there was a lot of, this looks really good. Maybe you might be able to answer some of the questions. I, it's always confusing. Sometimes you do the presentation first, and then my answers, my questions are answered and sometimes after. I noticed the translation support. I think that's great. There's, as a student who had a parent that didn't speak English very well, I know that students could also use it to their advantage to tell their parents what they want them to hear and what not to hear. But I was wondering if that was gonna be done per request, or you were just gonna automatically do that? On 5.6, family engagement. Thank you. This is, I think, what a lot of parents have been asking, continuing to do this, maybe a little bit more often is great. I appreciate that. I also wanted to mention, you added advocacy with elected representatives. I agree with this strongly. I think that that was where we kind of went on a slow start when all of this started, if we would have learned how to address representatives. And I think that we should, maybe if you could include bills, such as what was mentioned before, the Bill of AB 665 for the minors consent. I'm sure you guys know how we feel about that. I don't think that minors should be able to consent. If they can't drive, they can't buy beer, they can't smoke, then they shouldn't be consenting to certain things that, that a parent is gonna end up having the residual issues with if a child makes the wrong decision. It's the parents and the family that live with it, not the teachers or the school districts or the representatives that allowed them to do that. And as I was saying earlier with the equity, we want to teach our children to treat other people better. We don't want to be accommodating and bending backwards for them, because then you're gonna be with a diverse population. There's gonna be thousands of backs that are gonna need to be bending for thousands of different situations. Thank you.
Santa, your time is up. Thank you. Okay, Mr. Coleman, if you'd like to present this topic?
Yes. Tonight is the last edition of our updates to the board on our work on the strategic plan. Tonight, we talk about Focus Area Five, and I am here with my right-hand partner, our coordinator of communication, Ms. Debbie Dunn, who has been so central to much of the work that we've done in this area. We will be providing a brief overview of our progress on the seven initiatives that are found under Focus Area Five. And a reminder about format from this presentation, this is intended to be a concise overview verbally, whereas the details are attached to the agenda. And you'll note that each time we discuss one of the focus area, what are the initiatives, we will share with you a purpose outlined for each initiative, which is essentially what we're trying to accomplish. We will talk about what we're working on, a list for each initiative, and then we're gonna highlight one, just to make sure that you can see something that we are particularly proud of and we think we've made some progress on. So let's begin with 5.1 of our strategic plan, which is the intent to create a strategic communication plan. And our purpose behind this is to communicate proactively and efficiently with our families and to inform and engage our diverse community. And so I'm gonna turn actually now to Ms. Dunn to share a little bit about what we've been working on.
So some of the things we've been working on is surveys. Surveys, for example, before our website refresh, we surveyed parents, staff members, students to get input before we made that, those decisions. The input we received guided our decisions. Likewise, the choice for Parents Square. We met with students. We've met with parents. We met with staff members to get input before we make any major decisions, and I think this is a piece of the communication and collaboration. Social media presence, we're gonna talk more about that on the next slide. Website refresh. Last fall, we underwent a complete website refresh for all our school and district websites, but the work is not ever done. We are constantly making tweaks to update and to make things better, to make things easier. I'm considering, you know, a short window every summer of maybe putting a button on the website where people can give us input. You know, what, what can you not find? What could we do better? And if you get a chance, look, we just added another section under the About the District with some information there. And our new communications platform, Parents Square, which you will also hear much more about throughout this presentation. So social media. We have worked actively through the last year to increase our social media presence, and as you can see, there have been great results. We have, here's the statistics. We're up by 400% on Facebook and 200% on Instagram on the number of people that we're reaching. But why? Why are we bothering with this? Because we all know that we have amazing students and staff in the Hart district, and we have, we have a number of wonderful programs and activities, and we want to let people know about all the great things happening in the Hart district. And so we post on a very regular basis, and if you're not following us, you should be, because there is so much, so much happening. You know, with a district this size, there are so many things happening on a daily basis. And we, you might consider it as a up-to-the-minute newsletter, not a newsletter that comes to your inbox, per se, and you don't have time to read about it and you forget about it, but a newsletter or a repository of all the good things happening that you can go and look at at your convenience. So if you, if you're not following us, please do. We're on Facebook, Instagram, and Twitter.
And so we move on to Initiative 5.2, Outreach and Marketing. And our purposes there are to promote district programs, and the idea there is if we don't tell our story, someone else will. And so we believe, we know that we have outstanding things happening in our district, and so we've put together some specific ways to celebrate district accomplishments and to speak on what we're working on. Ms. Dunn?
So again, some of you might know about the Did You Know campaign, where it's just a light, engaging way to let people know about different facts about the Hart district. Good news, again, we want to share all the good news happening, and so on the website, under the communications page, there's a place where we ask you to go and share your good news with us so that we can publicize it. Employee Spotlight. Every week or two, we're picking our employees of the year, a teacher of the year, and a classified of the year, that we just spotlight and thank them for what they're doing in the Hart district. We're working on marketing materials, including a district brochure, kind of a facts at a glance. The, the board members were all given a pile of these brochures, and for you and the audience, if you're interested, there are some in the back of the room. In addition, we have a couple promotional videos. I'm gonna share one with you in a moment. You all know about the One Heart Awards, like the one that we gave yesterday, but if you go to the website, there is a page of all the One Heart Award winners for every month throughout the year. A Board Roundup. If you don't have time to sit through the three hours of a YouTube meeting, watch the meeting on YouTube, or to read the 10 pages of minutes following a board meeting... meeting, you can see the one or two-page short summary highlights of board meetings. It's on our website each after once a month. And another thing, we are working on job fairs, like the recent teacher fair that we had, but we're also involved in other job fairs for classified positions and so on. So if I can show you, this is a promotional video that we have right now on the HR Department page.
I'm Jim Clipfel. For decades, I have had the privilege of working with over 1,000 fellow educators in the William S. Hart School District. Situated in the northern Los Angeles County, the Hart District's teachers serve a large and diverse community of over 20,000 students in an inviting atmosphere with a small hometown feel. I have never heard anyone say growing up was too easy, or I had too many role models while growing up, but I often hear people reminisce about those special teachers who lovingly challenged them in ways that were transformative. This is a tough time to grow up, and kids today need more help than ever as they acquire skills, resilience, and a dream. Being that special teacher for the next generation is the most critical and rewarding calling out there. If you want to enable the dreams of others, become a teacher. I encourage you to join our desirable district and its team of loving and talented educators. The Hart District is part of a special community that respects and supports its teachers. That respect and support are essential to the rewarding but challenging journey of the career educator. The joy and fulfillment of serving amazing young people with a one-of-a-kind family of professional colleagues has blessed me with a remarkably rewarding career. It can do the same for you. Join us in the William S. Hart School District and help us enable the dreams of others.
It requires a spontaneous applause because it's so good, isn't it? Yeah, it's inspiring. Okay, and so we move on to Item 5.3, Translation Support. And I want to remind the board that this is, remember, year one of a five-year plan, and we realize this is one of those areas that we have a lot of work to do. But our purpose is to increase translation support in multiple languages for our increasingly diverse student body and families in the community. And Ms. Dunn will share what we're working on.
So one thing we've been working on, as far as the website goes, I think, I hope you're all aware, that there is the ability to translate on the website. There's a button at the top where you can translate into different languages, but it doesn't translate the attachments, the PDFs. And so we've communicated the expectation that going forward, all attachments will be on the website in English and Spanish, new things that are posted, and we are actively reviewing existing documents so that we can update all the key documents as necessary. Another big thing we're working on is the transition to Parents Square. So right now, our Blackboard system, we can send emails to parents, and we can press the Translate into Spanish button. But what Parents Square is going to do for us is give teachers the ability to communicate directly with parents in another language. So if a teacher wants to just send a quick message to a parent, parents will go into Parents Square, and they can choose the language that they are comfortable receiving their communication in. And the teacher can send a message, it will translate to the parent's message, to parent's language, and when the parent responds, it will translate that message back to English. And so we feel like this is going to be a huge step forward in our translation efforts for our district.
Okay. So Initiative 5.4 talks about increased two-way communication and collaboration. We wanted to make sure that when we wrote that, that we were noting it's not just increasing what we are sharing with the community, but providing ways for them to share back with us. And so what we're working on is I'd like to highlight the fact that this year, I implemented a change in a number of the councils that we meet with on a regular basis. We added this year, in addition to Parent Communication Council, that meets about eight times a year, I think we decided it was, and we have a Student Communications Council with Ms. Danielle Cox as a member of, that we did not have standing opportunities for representatives of classified and certificated to meet with us. And so we have added that, that we have quarterly meetings, and the intent there is that we would have representatives from those groups come meet with myself, directly with me and the rest of my cabinet, and we would be able to share the things that we're working on that are coming down the line, and then to gather direct feedback from those groups to help guide our decision-making. We have found very positive feedback from that, because we realize sometimes that some of the frustration comes from the fact that busy people who haven't been communicated with sometimes draw inaccurate conclusions, because we haven't spent the time actually sharing exactly what's going on, and we haven't listened to folks. So we have our communications councils. We've mentioned Parents Square, and I would like to highlight our community forums. This year, we held a safety forum in August of 2022, this is the last fall. The idea there was, we wanted to provide an update on the work that we have on our district-wide safety plan, since we implemented it following the Saugus shooting. And we also wanted to listen to the community, to ask them, how are we doing? Where are the holes in this plan, and what do we need to improve? So again, this wasn't just one-way communication. The idea was we wanted to gather information, and we have actively worked to update and revise our safety plan as a result. And has been noted, we will be having a second community forum. This is called Community Conversation About Culture and Climate, and this stemmed recently from a conversation that we are having about racism and race-based language and bias that may exist in pockets and places on our school sites, and we want to share the data that we have received about culture and climate on our school sites, and then we want to listen to our community, from students, staff, and parents, to hear what they can share about what's happening. So again, we can then have an accurate picture to know how to take next steps. So we do hope folks will join us on the 25th. Initiative 5.5 calls for us to collaborate with local districts, and the idea there, our purpose is to articulate with local districts and COC, and to coordinate to support families to plan for effective transitions. And we're working on a lot here. These are just some examples of things that we have done in concert, in collaboration with our partners, education partners here in the Valley. This past summer, some of you may remember that we hosted a superintendent's safety symposium that was in anticipation of the community-wide safety discussion. That's where we had Mr. Patrick Prince come in, shared the work that we had done with the Hart District, and shared best practices. That was with all the superintendents and members of their cabinet staff. We held an active shooter training at Valencia High School that was in concert with our local law enforcement, and it was inviting all of the other education institutions in our valley. We actively work to ensure that every high school, every junior high school site hosts sixth and seventh grade welcome nights, because we recognize that when students have an opportunity to come see the campus, it demystifies the campus, it reduces anxiety, and those are generally accepted as very positive opportunities. We have rescheduled, brought back on board, a Hart-COC joint board meeting. In a moment, I'm going to talk once again about the Teacher Recruitment Fair, and of course, last Saturday is a great example of working together, the many families, One Community, that has been put together in coordination with the Sulphur Springs District. And as a highlight, it's been mentioned a few times, and I wanted to compliment Dr. Nielsen and his team, and actually, everybody who was here that took part in this. This was a resounding success. We got to see hundreds of prospective teaching candidates, and they met with representatives from all of the districts in our valley. And I know for a fact that we have already offered contracts to a number of stars, both in the Hart District and throughout all the elementary feeder districts that work together with us. And one of the nice things about it as well was, it was also just a great way to tell people about the good things that are happening in our district. And so people came away from that thinking, this was worth doing again, and it's an example, a great example of coordination. I know Dr. Nielsen, a ton of work went in, and I think it was just a feeling of us all working toward a common purpose. Moving on to Item 5.6, Family Engagement. And Santa, I wanted to take note here, we chose this word on purpose, because I hear you in the back in the best possible way. Our job is to engage families, not just involve, but we want them to be actively a part of what's going on and feel that they are being listened to and that they're part of the process. So we're working on a number of things, and here's a list, and I'm not going to read through all of those lists, because these are some of the terms that you've seen before, a number of ways that we are working to make sure that we have open access to families. But I would like to highlight once again how we are using a particular technology, Parents Square, to help with family engagement. And once again, I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Dunn to talk about another aspect.
Okay, so Parents Square offers parents other options besides just language. Parents, in addition to choosing their own language, they can go in and choose how they receive communications. So if you are happy getting emails, that's fine. If you want to receive all your communications through texts, that's fine. If you want to download the Parents Square app, that's fine. And in the Parents Square app, rather than getting emails throughout the day from different teachers and the school and the district, you can choose to receive your messages once a day in a daily digest. So we're hoping this is going to be a driver of more parent engagement, and we have a quick video on Parents Square here. Oops, looks like it won't, there.
Thanks for visiting Parents Square. Our goal is to help you streamline your communication and parent engagement efforts across your schools. Parents Square unifies communication for all stakeholders and is 100% parent-centric. That means that everyone is using the same platform, including teachers, principals, staff, admin, even the superintendent. Here, we're logged in as a principal at Lincoln Elementary School. As an admin in Parents Square, I know exactly what's going on at my school and have full access and insight into all school-to-home communication. I can also send out messages to the entire school, or I can send to specific grade levels, classrooms, or groups. We integrate and sync on a nightly basis with your student information system to ensure accurate reach at all times and minimal effort for all users to get started. There are three main ways to communicate in Parents Square: alerts and notifications, posts, and private chats. Let's start by sending out an emergency alert from the app. Traditional one-way alerts and emergency notifications deliver as phone calls, emails, texts, or app notifications. You can also send alerts from the web portal. The second way to communicate in Parents Square is via a post. Sending posts are for day-to-day communication, used by teachers for their classroom communication and administrators for school, or district-wide communication. A teacher has access to send messages to their classroom, grade level, and select groups only, and roles can be restricted even further. Posts include plenty of different features, such as photos and files, links, and item requests. If you're sharing an event, you can quickly add it to your event calendar, which syncs with your existing calendars. You can also request RSVPs, ask for a few volunteers, or even set up online payments. You can also send forms electronically through Parents Square. Paper permission slips often end up lost at the bottom of students' backpacks. Ensure your important forms are delivered directly to parents by adding a digital form with optional electronic signature to your post. You can also send out newsletters with our newsletter template option. We build everything in-house, so the look and feel will remain the same whether you use one or all of our add-ons. A post will reach parents via email, text, or app notification, depending on their preference. The third main way to communicate in Parents Square is via private chats, one-to-one or one-to-many. Parents can also initiate these private chats if they want to reach their child's teacher, and all communication is done via the private portal or app. Now that everyone at your school or district is using the same communication platform, we can gather statistics for you and help measure not only reach and delivery, but also parent engagement and usage. Also, admins can assign different roles with restricted access, so you know with confidence that your staff are communicating with the right group, class, and grade level at all times. A district account will have super-user access available to communicate district-wide alerts and announcements, as well as insight and access to all site communication, including private chats. As you can see, there's no need to go outside of Parents Square for any of your communication and parent engagement needs. All features are available at Lincoln Elementary, but you can start with as few or as many of our features as you'd like, since we offer three different packages. I hope you enjoyed learning more about Parents Square. I look forward to discussing how we can help engage your school community.
Okay, we look forward to the use of that tool, and we have begun the process of training staff to make sure that it's not too abrupt of a shift for the start of the fall. And finally, let's conclude with a note about educational advocacy, and I want to take note of the fact that Dr. Moore specifically asked that this be added as an area of focus for us. Our purpose is to engage with local, state, and nationally-elected officials to advocate for Hart District interests. There's a list of what we're working on there, which I will touch on a little bit under highlights, but I wanted to take note that I specifically have reached out and joined two groups, the High School Superintendent Coalition, which is a group that the board actually authorized earlier, and what this does is we have an advocate, there is a paid advocate that works in the Sacramento area on issues specifically related to high school districts, because oftentimes, some of the legislation that comes down, comes down through the lens of elementary school districts, and so that has been particularly helpful. And we also have a Southern California Superintendents Group, where we bring in some of the key leaders from the state of California to tell us what's going on, and providing direct access to people who are making the decisions in Sacramento. I'd like to highlight just some examples of ways we in the district have worked with elected representatives. With Congressman Mike Garcia, we are currently working on some proposals, on some safety proposals, and requests for funding for automatic door buzzers at all of our school sites. With California Assemblywoman Pilar Chiavo, along with Dr. Moore, we recently had a conversation where we talked a little about the chemical makeup of artificial, of our artificial fields and some of the recent vaccination legislation. With California Assemblywoman Suzette Vaidaras, we had many, many conversations about pandemic-related education, things like independent study and quarantine, and she assisted us as some of that important legislation was taking place. With California State Senator Scott Wilk, I know that I've had recent conversations with Mr. Messina, and Mr. Messina has actually been working with us to advocate on behalf of some crisis reporting bills that are going through Sacramento. And finally, County Supervisor Catherine Barger, we have done some tremendous work together on educating around the dangers of fentanyl. And so that concludes our report on Focus Area 5, Communication and Collaboration. And if you have any questions, we are here to answer them.
Any questions, board, or comments?
Mr. Jensen, I just have one.
Please.
As you are, I would, great presentation. It looks like there's a lot of work, and I know, Debbie, you have done an amazing job. You know, I know there's always other duties that are assigned, but you have just done wonders. As we're looking at translation, I would like for the superintendent and Ms. Dunn to consider our families who have maybe visual acuity issues, also American Sign Language, just so that we're ensuring that all of our families, it's not necessarily maybe a language, but it could also be, what do we do to ensure that screen readers can read those types of things? Or maybe you've already done it, and if you have, then...
The website, Teresa Morgan on the website, she is constantly, she does regular checks for accessibility issues to make sure we're in compliance and that everything has screen reader capability. So on the website portion, yes.
Great, excellent. Thank you so much for sharing that.
Any other questions?
We're in the process right now of transferring all our data over. We're working with them on data at the moment, with the goal of getting administrators on there in May, maybe rolling it out to parents to be able to create their accounts over the summer with full-on transition for the beginning of the school year.
Dr. Moore?
Thank you. This was, am I on? This was really, really a good report. This was really, really a good report. Debbie, it's always good to see your rising to the ask of doing this communication work that is really beyond what your duties are and truly shows remarkable work in doing it. The website, the brochure, I love. I'm so glad that we have that. Just really wanted to thank you for your work. I use ParentSquare. We have it in Sulphur Springs School District, and I am looking forward to having a tool as, you know, and I'm going to have to stop figuring out how to say this, with my students starting in our district next year. I'm looking forward to having a tool that, my student, my son, he was a student. I'm looking forward to having a communication tool that continues, that will provide some seamlessness for those of us coming from the elementary schools. I don't know if our other elementary districts use it, but that will really help a lot. I also wanted to look at 5.6 on family engagement, and I love the work that we're working on. And Mr. Coleman, we can, of course, talk about this at a different time, but I'm looking at opportunities because here in the board meetings, we consistently hear that as public comments happen, we're not able to respond. But to have opportunities and maybe have board member town halls, that could be a part of family engagement and to allow the ability to coordinate within our district's opportunity to have some dialogue. So I'd like to see that.
Yeah.
Mr. Messina?
Mr. Coleman, you know, that could ride alongside with, you and I had discussed family nights at different high schools across the valley, where we opened up the gym or what have you, bring in some food, some counselors, and invite the local families in to come talk to the counselors, talk to the school board members, that kind of stuff. So you would really be drawing in the local community. I think that would be great. Number two is on ParentSquare. Do, if you have a child at junior high school, a child at high school, can you pull that together? And even if you have a child at elementary school, can you kind of get it all in one place?
Yes.
Okay. Good. Even across districts, too, right?
Yes.
All right, perfect. Thank you.
Danny, did you have anything?
I didn't have any questions, but I did want to compliment you on the video. I have never seen so many students that I know, like, in one video, and it was so nice to see, and I think it was amazing, and it represented the Hart District really well.
Yes. Debbie, great job. Mike, thank you. Excellent work. Really appreciate it. Strategic plan, this last focus area, everything's coming together really well. So, good work. All right, we're going to move on now to our bargaining proposals. Colin Nielsen, Dr. Nielsen, first is CSEA Chapter 349.
Thank you, and good evening. This item is the first step in a two-board meeting process. The intent of this process dictated by Education Code is to provide an opportunity for public comment for the board to consider in providing direction to the negotiating team for the district. In its initial bargaining proposal, CSEA is indicating its intent to negotiate within Articles 8, 10, and 15. This is a re-opener year, so up to three articles, in addition to salary and benefits, may be reopened and addressed during this negotiating year. At our next board meeting, we will have a public hearing, and the board will take action.
Thank you, Dr. Nielsen. Now it's HDTA.
Actually, it's the district's initial bargaining proposal for CSEA is the next item. And so similarly, this item is also the first step in a two-board meeting process. In the district's initial bargaining proposal to CSEA, we are indicating our intent to negotiate within Articles 6, 7, 8, 10, and 24.
Okay, okay. Okay, very good. All right, next is our Williams report. Dr. Viera?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Jensen. For the most recent quarter, from January 1st to March 31st, there were no Williams complaints.
Okay, we won't complain about that at all. All right. Action items is our next step on the agenda. The first one is National Library Week. We do have two speakers on this. The first is Diane Zimmerman, the second is Cindy. Diane, are you here?
Yes.
National Library Week. Okay, you may begin.
Thank you. Have all of you seen a drag queen reading to the children in the public libraries? What is it about our children that is so enticing to these men calling themselves women? Think about it. You want someone reading to these children. How about retired grandparents, vets, police officers, firemen, people who love children for being children and for no other reason? How about high school students for extra credit towards their graduation? This does have to do the library as well. Please follow up on Mr. Messina's request as to how the book Gender Queer that Mr. Wright brought up got into the school libraries, library, or libraries. I do believe it is in more than one. And please start, since it's been 30 years, please take a look at the rest of the books that have been introduced into the school libraries. Bad enough they're in the public libraries, but in the school libraries, absolutely appalling that there would be this kind of material for children of any age, I don't care what age they are, actually adults of any age shouldn't be exposed to these books. Not necessary, and pretty sick. That pretty much does it, except to compliment Mr. Messina on bringing up things that need to be brought up and trying to push for them to be looked into. I appreciate that, as always, even though we disagree a lot of the time. I agree with him on most things lately. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Cindy. You may begin.
As a concerned parent, I would like to ask the librarians, why such books with inappropriate content, including sex acts, pictures, and dialogue are displayed in our libraries? Do the librarians really think that this is okay for our children to view? Would they let their own child view these books? I would love to know that answer. As parents, we have a responsibility to protect our children from exposure to harmful and inappropriate material. It is important that we work together with the school board and the library staff to find a solution to this issue, because these are horrific books, and they're unacceptable. We need to ask the question, who is responsible for deciding to put these books in the libraries? And why are they there in the first place? And we need to hold them accountable. It is crucial that we take action and remove these books from our libraries to ensure that our children have access to materials that support healthy and positive, in a positive future. Mr. Webb, I hear that you and your husband are wonderful parents, and I applaud you for that. And I do believe that you think these books are unacceptable and inappropriate for the students as well. I urge you to stand with the parents and fight to get these books out of our libraries. I think we all need to stand together to ensure our children to have a safe and nurturing environment to learn and grow. I believe that we all want the same thing, but actions speak louder than words. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Dr. Viera, Resolution 22/23-38, National Library Week.
Yes, it's my pleasure to recommend that the governing board approve Resolution Number 23/23-38, recognizing April 23rd to 29th as National Library Week. National Library Week was first recognized in 1958 to highlight the essential role libraries play and to recognize roles of our own teacher librarians and library staff in transforming the lives of our students and strengthening our community. It is for these and many other reasons that this resolution is recommended to the governing board.
Move the resolution for recognizing April 23rd to the 29th, 2023, as National Library Week.
Motion by Dr. Moore, second by Mrs. Storey to approve Resolution Number 22/23-38. All in favor?
I have a comment, though, sorry. I was...
Go ahead.
And my comment is, I want to actually make sure that as we're recognizing this, this recognizes our teacher librarians and our library media technicians and our other library staff. I know I've asked about this before, and I just want to know where we are of looking at our library media tech positions and the possibility of restoring those positions back to what they were. You can tell me Friday in a memo, or, but I just want it on record that we need to look at that. Okay.
And we have looked at it, yes. Happy to share, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Student board member?
Aye.
And the chair says aye. Thank you. Dr. Viera, board members? Okay, next is our Sportgate software license agreement. Mr. Crawford?
Hello again. Good evening, and thank you again, Governing Board. Tonight's action item actually gives us the opportunity to talk about the partnership that we have with Henry Mayo Hospital and represented tonight by the Director of Rehabilitation at Henry Mayo, Dr. John Adam, right back there in the back. This partnership has ensured that each of our seven comprehensive high schools are staffed with full-time athletic trainers. Now, this is a peace of mind, not only as an administrator, but also as a parent and my own children involved in high school athletics, knowing that these qualified trainers are at each and every one of our sites working with our students. These athletic trainers develop and implement strategies that can prevent the incidence and/or severity of injuries and optimize students' overall health and quality of life. And to speak briefly tonight about the impact of the ATC program here in the Hart District and the importance of this new Sportgate software for concussion awareness is our lead athletic trainer, Mr. Jake Berkowitz.
Members of the board and district administration, I am here tonight to give you an update on the Athletic Training Outreach Program. The program currently has seven full-time certified athletic trainers and one per diem athletic trainer. Over the years, this program has grown and thrived along with sports in our valley. The athletic training program serves as a standard of what a public high school district and a private community hospital can do to better serve the community. Henry Mayo and the Hart District should be very proud to have qualified, full-time medical professionals at all of their comprehensive high schools. The athletic trainers serve not only as onsite first responders, but their expertise in orthopedic evaluation, injury rehabilitation, nutrition, and mental health have proven to be an invaluable resource for our high schools. As an athletic trainer who serves a socio-economically disadvantaged student athlete population, I take great pride in being able to help my athletes return to sport and help them in their athletic and academic achievement. Over the course of a year in my clinic, I will see on average of 3,400 student athletes come through my doors for a variety of reasons, including injuries, orthopedic rehabilitation, injury prevention programs, and therapeutic recovery methods. Last year as a district, we saw a total of 993 sport-related injuries and completed 3,824 treatments on those injuries. It's about an average of about four, four treatments per injury. Last year, or sorry, in the current year, for the first 10 and 1/2 months, we have seen 938 sport-related injuries and have completed 3,647 treatments on those injuries. In addition, this year, we have implemented over 20 injury prevention programs within our district, with more on the way. One of our goals for this program is to continue to look for innovation. In sports medicine, you have to stay current. The same medical principles from 10 years ago are not necessarily the standard of today. The district and hospital ATC collaboration started with a recognition that concussion management needed to be focused on. One of the ways we are looking forward is by addressing this is through the Sportgate Concussion Software App. This app will allow the athletic trainers to administer baseline concussion testing to our student athletes right from their cell phones. Athletes will be put through cognitive, reaction, and gait assessment tests so that in the event of a concussive event, this software can be utilized to retest and compare baseline measurements, helping in their return-to-play decision. The app will not replace having a qualified athletic trainer on the sidelines, but will be another tool to help the clinician. The software will also allow us to complete concussion testing on an unlimited amount of student athletes, and it will also allow us to do an unlimited amount of retests on those athletes before we use the system where we'd have to pay for each individual test. That's no longer the case with this app. The software will allow the ATC to send reports directly to parents and grant access to them so that they can see their student athlete profiles and see how their child did compared to their baseline testing. This will help create an overall clearer picture of the student athlete's mental and physical well-being for following a concussive-type injury. I look forward to giving you an update on the program after its rollout next month. This advancement in concussive care would not have been possible without Henry Mayo New Hall Hospital and the William S. Hart School District. I want to thank John Adam, Mark Crawford, this board, district administration, and Henry Mayo for their continued support of the Henry Mayo Athletic Training Outreach Program. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Move to ratify the license agreement with Sportgate Software and the William S. Hart Union High School District effective March 15th, 2023, through July 1st, 2024. And thank you so much for finding a software that really can help us assess quickly. Having experienced children with concussions, I know how important this is so that we can quickly know if that child is concussed. So thank you for finding the software.
Second?
We have a motion and a second, but before we vote, I did want to thank you very much. I attend a ton of sporting events and have done so for many years, and I see you guys all in action with our students and our coaches, and it's just really a blessing to our district and our, that, those type of events. So thank you very much. Appreciate your report. Look forward to another one coming up. So we have a motion by Dr. Moore, a second by Mrs. Storey to approve this agreement. All in favor?
Aye.
Student board member?
Aye.
Chair says aye. Motion carries. Thank you very much again. Really appreciate it. Okay, we're going to move on to agreement for educational consulting services with Vital Educational Leadership Consulting. Mr. Coleman?
Yes, thank you, Principal Jensen. I'm here today to ask for the board to approve the agreement for the Educational Consulting Services with Vital Educational Leadership Consulting. We were prompted to consider this option by our recent attention to the racist language and concerns about bias that was shared with us by students, staff members, and parents in our schools, and particularly that conversation beginning formally on April 25th. And we, and to do so, we want to bring in outside eyes to help us ask penetrating questions, to genuinely look in the mirror when it comes to school culture and climate at the schools in the Hart District. So we'd like to ask for the assistance of Dr. Michelle Bowers to make this happen. Dr. Bowers has been a school educator for more than 30 years, has the distinction of being the first woman and the first African-American to be appointed as superintendent of Lancaster School District in Lancaster, California, where she's served successfully for 10 years until she retired in 2022. Dr. Viera and I have worked directly with Dr. Bowers, and we think she will be a perfect fit for this ask. She's received numerous awards that you had the chance to review, which included the 2020 Los Angeles County Superintendent of the Year, the 2018 CASA Superintendent of the Year, and the 2019 AXA Valuing Diversity Award. We are asking for her guidance to provide support and training to the Hart District in two specific areas. First, in the planning and facilitating of the Hart District Community Conversation About School Culture and Climate, April 25th, we'd like for her to be the person that helps facilitate the discussion, and then to move beyond that to put together a written report based upon the information that came from that that will help us, guide us on next steps. Secondly, we are asking her to help in, to plan and facilitate a board governance workshop to take place either in the summer or the fall of this next year with the goal of increasing cultural competency and reinforcing the district's commitment to fostering a culture of inclusivity, kindness, and respect for all students. Specifically, what might happen during that special board meeting? She would be presenting an executive report and a summary as a follow-up to the meeting on 4/25. She would work together with the board and our governance team to clarify team priorities and objectives as it pertains to school, climate, and culture, and it would allow us to better understand the body of work and successful strategies to address cultural competency, to improve expectations for all students, experiences for all students, and outcomes for all students. The maximum financial impact for the district would be not to exceed $8,600 for all of the preparation, planning, and for these two events. And with that information, with the data that we included, the information that we included on the board agenda, we'd ask for the board to approve this consultant agreement. agreement.
Moved. Second.
Motion by Mrs. Storey, second by Dr. Moore to approve this consulting agreement as stated by Mr. Coolman. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Student board member?
Aye.
And the chair says aye. Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Coolman. We look forward to all those events and the things that we'll do in that regard. Next is our Career Tech Educational Incentive Grant Award. Dr. Viera?
Thank you. The William S. Hart Union High School District Career and College Readiness Department has been awarded round eight of the Career Technical Education Incentive Grant in the amount of almost $2.7 million to accomplish grant project goals through December of 2024. This is the highest amount we have received and will be used to continue to provide students with hands-on lab and studio experience using industry-standard equipment and college-aligned curriculum that would, that our students need to transition to employment and post-secondary education. I'd like to thank Dr. Hoffmann and her team for the continued work they're doing in the CCR department, and it's recommended that the board approve the acceptance of these grant funds.
No moves.
Second, but I have a question.
Go ahead, please.
Okay, and, Dr. Viera, as I read the GAN for this, it said that the award start date was July 1, 2022, and they just sent the letter February 8, 2023. That's seven months later?
This is an, it's, as I said, it's round eight, and so I believe it's just a perpetual one. I'm not sure the exact date on the letter, and that I'll have to check, but this is the eighth time we've received a grant fund.
Okay, and the reason?
I have something.
Information here?
No, I, no, not inside, but it's a rolling basis. So, it's when the grant program begins, and then what they do is they roll it out in different, at least that's the way we do it at the commission. So, it's very possible that it began on that date, but then it's consistently rolling out across, over the life and the arc of the grant.
I hope that's right.
Yeah.
What I want to hope is inaccurate is that the state is seven months late funding us for a program that we've had to foot the bill for, because that's how the GAN has happened in adult ed. Sometimes the state has been that late, and we've had to pay without knowing for sure that we were going to get the money, waiting on this. So, seven months is too long, if that is the case.
A statement. I misspoke earlier when I said two-point, I'm sorry, whatever million. I was thanking someone for a gift, and it was, I meant to say grant. Thank you.
All right, any further comments or questions? Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Messina, second by Dr. Moore to approve the receipt of these CTE grant funds. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Student board member?
Aye.
Chair says aye. Motion carries. Thank you. Okay, Dr. Vera, you have the next one on LCAP?
Yeah, we're required to provide an annual update to the LCAP Federal Addendum, which describes how federal categorical funds are provided through Every Student Succeeds Act. The updated components that it's included in the addendum here is number of teachers, student enrollment information, also a programmatic change, and it's recommended that the board approve the annual update to the LCAP Federal Addendum.
I move to approve the annual update to the LCAP Federal Addendum.
Second. Motion by Dr. Moore, second by Mr. Webb to approve the LCAP update as stated. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Student board member?
Aye.
Chair says aye. Motion carries. Thank you. Dr. Viera, we're going to move on to item F, which is the final adoption of textbooks, instructional materials, 2023, 2024. Would you have a speaker card? Rebecca Heineman, Rebecca, if you would come up and?
Rebecca's gone.
Okay, so she's gone. We'll not speak on that one, and? Yours are on consent calendar, yeah. Mr. Labarren, please, please approach the podium and pontificate to us. Oh, okay. Get ready to start that mic. Okay, you may begin.
I'm here to support this lovely, amazing history book. Mr. Labarren honored us at PTSO to bring the book to us and discuss it. I got to flip through it. I was amazingly impressed. I am one of those kids, I hated history in high school. I would take this class. It is easier to read, simple, single columns. It is not overwhelming. It asks amazing pertinent questions based on worldview history. And also, just for those that need to know, there's an incredible index in the back, and they have all the world religions. And being the Religious Studies major that I was, kind of got me excited. So, I was here to support that. And then on a side note, thanks for showing Clippy. Mr. Cliffel is my daughter's inspiration and was her Common App essay. So, got me a little foot lumped. Thank you, guys.
Okay, thank you. All right, Mr. Labarren, please introduce the topic. Yes, yeah.
Thank you. I'm going to put these out so we can see what we're talking about.
These each one pull its reprises, right, these books here?
Before I begin, I want to apologize to three people sitting in the audience tonight. I told these folks, when I encouraged them and actually twisted their arms to come and be here tonight, the three teachers, they'd be driving home about 40 minutes ago. So, thank you for being so patient and staying awake and being with us so far tonight.
I don't know if he was awake. I saw some.
Tonight, the three sets of materials that you see here are coming before you. It's our 7th grade world history, 8th grade US history, and then high school world history have gone through a very thorough vetting process that began one year ago. The process has been the same for each of these publications, and I'd like to share that process briefly with you tonight. Last spring, a selection committee was formed for each of these content areas. Each committee was comprised of a general education teacher from each of the schools, an EL teacher, a special education teacher, a teacher librarian, a school administrator, and a parent. Committees met last spring to determine the essential requirements of the instructional materials they would be reviewing and to create a rubric to use in the selection process last fall or the next fall when we got back. What they agreed on last spring is very clear. They said, number one, content had to be aligned to the state's standards. That was a non-negotiable. Content had to provide thorough treatment of the subject matter. The materials that came with the materials had to support and provide universal access for all students. Materials provided had to be an abundant student supports and quality instructional supports. And also, the content had to be current and well documented. Those were all things the group agreed on. It had to be true for the books we were going to pursue that following fall or this past fall. During the fall semester, the committee received presentations from publishers and worked together using their evaluation rubric to come to consensus on the best materials to move forward in the process. Before leaving for winter break, committee members came to an agreement on the best material to use, and were given time to prepare for a piloting that would take place third quarter, that they all would be doing with their students. During the third-quarter pilot, committees met after school to discuss how well the materials are meeting expectations. At the end of the pilot, the committees met to decide the materials warranted moving forward for adoption, and in this case, all three of them did. Finally, after receiving the board's recommendation to the pursue adoption, which was our last board meeting, I took the materials to parent groups to share and discuss it with them. This spring, I have shared the materials with parents at the district parent communication council, at Golden Valley High School, Saugus High School, Castaic High School, and La Mesa Junior High School. Unfortunately, COVID kept me from meeting my two other appointments at the high school and one other appointment at junior high school. If you approve these materials tonight, the adoption process will, have been, will have ended, but the rollout process will begin. And we will have a training prior to the end of the school year, and then multiple ongoing trainings with teachers going throughout next school year. These three publications you see before you tonight all align tightly with the state framework. They're all hybrid materials, which means they have very strong hardbound print materials as well as digital supports along with them as well. All of these also have a strong support for our English learner community to help, or our Spanish speakers tie into the curriculum as well. So, having said that, questions you may have for me?
Statement or two?
Yes, ma'am.
I did take them home. Actually, there was several packages of them. Looked through the American stories as, as what we looked at a couple of years ago for the high school. The National Geographic does an amazing job, as we all know with many things, but the, the pictures and the, the text in the books, I was very impressed with as a history teacher. And I looked for things that my, people might not like, and I didn't find any things that people might not like. I don't know everyone, and I don't know what they like, but I was very comfortable with what was presented in the history books.
Yeah, and thank you for bringing it up to Ms. Storey. The history 7 and 8 are from Cengage, which is National Geographic, and the high school world history is from Grau Hill.
Any other questions or comments?
I'd like to move to the top.
Motion by Mrs. Storey. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Webb to adopt these textbooks as presented by Dave Labarren. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Student board member?
Aye.
And the chair says aye. Thank you, Mr. Labarren. Appreciate your efforts there.
Your Ipalito's, you know, waking up now, so.
Okay, we're going to move on now to some site-based decisions. The first is Hart High School. Dr. Nielsen?
I thought those three were sticking around for the site-based decisions I'm about to talk about, but I, I guess I was wrong.
I guess not.
Mr. President, with your permission, I'd like to talk about these next four items together and give a brief recap of each before having the board motion and vote on those.
Sure.
If that's allowed.
Sounds good.
Yes, okay, thank you. So, I have four site-based decisions to, before us tonight, and each one of these was voted on and approved by certificated staff at the sites per the process spelled out in the HGTA contract. They each meet the minimum instructional minute requirements, and they were each approved by HGTA. And so, I'll start with Hart High School. They held a site-based decision vote from March 29 through the 30, asking staff to decide upon keeping their current schedule or moving to a seven-period schedule with a single brunch. 92% of staff voted for the new schedule. Staff recommends approval of this site-based decision. For La Mesa Junior High School, they held their site-based decision vote from April 12 through the 14, just last week, asking staff to decide upon keeping their current schedule or move to a block schedule. 74% of staff voted for the block schedule. And as a note, the attachment for this board item has been updated. The duration, the only, the single change from what you have in front of you is that the, the duration of the block periods have been increased by five minutes during the regular school days. So, instead of 85, I think it's 85 minutes, it should be, it's now 90, they voted on 90 minutes to make sure that they met that instructional minute requirement. Staff recommends approval of this site-based decision as well. At Valencia High School, they held a site-based decision vote from March 23 to the 24, asking staff to vote upon keeping the schedule they voted in last year. And with a successful vote, the schedule will become permanent per the HGTA contract, and 83% of the staff voted to make last year's schedule permanent. Staff recommends approval of this site-based decision. And the final one is from West Ranch High School. They held their site-based decision vote from March 6 to the 9, asking staff to decide upon keeping their current schedule or moving to a schedule that adjusts the finals schedule each semester. And so, the new schedule maintained, this, the new schedule that adjusted those final schedules maintains the block schedule with a late start Wednesday. 97.8% of staff voted for the, for that block schedule with the adjustment to the final schedule. Staff recommends approval of that site-based decision as well.
Thank you, Dr. Nielsen. We can vote on all four of these at once if you would like.
I would like to.
I would like to ask a question. But, I'm so sorry. Dr. Nielsen, I have a question about the Hart schedule. In looking at the current schedule for Hart High School on a regular day, the periods are 55 minutes in length. However, when I look at the regular day schedule for Hart High School that was voted on, they drop down to 50 minutes. Could I have some understanding? I, I don't understand a lowering of instructional minutes for a normal school day. And I apologize, but we just got the schedule today. So, that's why I didn't, you know, have the opportunity to maybe think about this further.
I don't have the reasoning behind that. I know they wanted to, their, their enrollment has dropped, and I was there as an assistant principal when population was, was really large before the opening of Golden Valley and West Ranch High Schools. And trying to serve all kids with a single brunch was nearly impossible, and so they went to a double brunch schedule at that time. But with, with the enrollment having dipped a bit, the, this, the motivation behind this site-based decision is to go back to a, a one brunch schedule for the day. I, I do not have the reasoning behind the, the lowering to 50 minutes of instructional time.
And I understand that, but when I look at West Ranch's and Valencia's, even though that should, because West Ranch is down as well, that didn't change. So, I'm just a little concerned about periods being lowered in terms of instructional minutes on a regular day. And having been in the classroom, looking at a minimum day of 30 minutes, you know, and then late start at 40, I mean, that's, that's very low.
I don't see where the minutes went to. If you try to add these up, they, I don't think they add up, but I'm, I don't do math, so.
They do meet the instructional minute requirement.
I believe that, but if they start at 8:30 and they stop at 3:57, and they're 50 minutes apiece, and you look at the brunch and lunch, I don't think these add up.
Let me ask this question. This was an item that we neglected. It was our, our error, actually, to post the, the minutes until today, which is the reason why we had an intent. So, there is, there's nothing that would preclude us from bringing this back at the next meeting, which would give us a little more time to answer those questions.
That is correct.
So, I might suggest we pull this one item with the intent of getting those questions answered.
The one for Hart High?
Yeah, for Hart High.
Okay. Let's pull Hart High, and we'll vote on the other three.
All moved on the other three.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Storey, second by Mr. Messina to approve the site-based decisions for La Mesa Junior High, Valencia High School, and West Ranch High School. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Student board member?
Aye.
And the chair says aye. Thank you, Dr. Nielsen.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll look into Hart High and bring that back later on. So, now we're down to Mr. Otavka. First one is proposal for gymnasium floor replacement at Castaic High School.
Yes, good evening, Mr. President, members of the board. Shortly after the gymnasium wood floor at Castaic High School was installed, the floor started developing gaps between the wooden planks. The gaps became so large that the floor splintered in some areas, creating a hazard for players. As a temporary fix, while staff worked on a complete floor replacement, the gaps were filled, the floor was repainted, and given a new finish coat to remove, to remove any hazards. It was determined that the wood floorboards that make up the gymnasium floor needed to be acclimatized correctly by the contractor before they were installed. The lack of adequate acclimatization caused the floorboards to separate after installation. Staff has completed the settlement with the construction insurance company statewide educational wrap-up program, sew-up, for this work. So, the entire floor of the gymnasium will be replaced, and sew-up will reimburse the district for their work. The work is being done through a source-well contract. Are there any questions?
There's all kinds of questions, but I'm glad it's being paid for by insurance.
Yeah.
That was going to be my point as well, so thank you for making sure that was clear in the item.
Anything else to discuss or?
Move to approve the proposal from Pacific Floor Company to replace the gymnasium wood floor at our high school that is only four years old at Castaic High School.
Second. Oh, sorry, Linda. Motion by Dr. Moore, second by Mr. Webb to approve the proposal with Pacific Floor Company for Castaic High School. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Student board member?
Aye.
Chair says aye. Excellent, thank you. All right, Mr. Otavka. Next is the fee proposal for Hart High School varsity softball field.
Yes, this is for Construction Management Services. The varsity softball field plans were completed and are currently being reviewed by the Division of the State Architect. Staff anticipates that DSA will approve the plan shortly, and the project will be bid in time to start the construction work over summer break. Staff recommends using Fonder Solari, one of the district's approved construction management firms, as the construction manager for this project. Are there any questions?
Move to approve the fee proposal from Fonder Solari for Construction Management Services for the Hart High School varsity softball project. for the Hart High School varsity softball project.
Motion by Dr. Moore, second by Mrs. Storey to approve the fee proposal with Fonder Solari, as stated. All in favor?
Aye.
Student board member?
Aye.
Chair says aye. Thank you. All right, Mr. Otavka, your last one here is fee amendment number one at Valencia High School fire alarm replacement.
It is the responsibility of the project inspector to perform tasks required of them by the Division of State Architect in the district, such as performing periodic inspections of the work, advising the contractor of non-conforming work, keeping accurate records, and certifying that the completed work has been done in accordance with the DSA-approved plans and specifications. Since this is a DSA project, DSA requires the district to employ a DSA inspector. The anticipated completion for this project has been extended to July 2023 due to procurement issues and other unseen, unforeseen conditions. Independent construction inspection is requesting a fee amendment based on this project delay. All of this work is being done after hours, 3:00 p.m. to 11:00 p.m., since the work is going on while the school is in operation. Staff recommends approval of fee amendment number one for Independent Construction Inspection Incorporated for this project. Are there any questions?
No.
Even though the project is running over, it's still well under budget.
And I see it's only, it's only sixty-six thousand, okay. So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Storey, second by Mr. Webb to approve fee amendment number one for the Valencia High School fire alarm replacement project. All in favor?
Aye.
Student board member?
Aye.
Chair says aye. Thank you, Mr. Otavka. Appreciate your services.
Thank you.
Mr. Jensen, if I, if I may, revisit item G very quickly?
Sure.
I have some updated information.
Okay.
So what Hart High School did with this schedule is they added a seventh period after eight-thirty a.m., which, which now counts for instructional minutes, and it also counts, if you count up the minutes, every other day, there is a hundred minutes for, for each class, similar to the block schedule at other, at other high schools.
Also go later in the day.
That's correct.
Okay. I, I saw that. Took me a while.
So I don't know if we want to revisit it now, if we want to bring it back in May?
Personally, well, I think it would be better to revisit rather than, because the, the minutes are, sorry.
Still have questions.
Yeah, there's still questions, and again, just the periods are still fifty minutes in length.
Okay. Understood, thank you.
Thank you for the updated information. We will revisit it. Mr. Webb, appreciate your comments there. Okay, we'll move on to item N, which is resolution number twenty-two slash twenty-three dash forty. I have this one. This approves the termination of the existing contract with our superintendent, and it approves a new contract with our superintendent. We have just finished our annual evaluation with our superintendent, Mr. Coolman. It is a positive evaluation. We're appreciative of his leadership. We're looking forward to working with him in the future, going forward. He's been a superintendent with our district now for three years. It was a three-year contract, so it necessitates that we terminate the existing contract and draft a new contract because of his three years being completed. The terms of the new contract are the same as the old in that the salary amount of his contract stays the same as what it was before this new agreement. So I would recommend that we approve resolution number twenty-two slash twenty-three dash forty to approve the termination of the existing contract and approve his new contract.
Can we do both at once?
Yes.
I'd like to move resolution number twenty-two slash twenty-three forty and twenty-two twenty-three slash thirty-nine.
Second.
Okay, we have, actually, twenty-two dash twenty-three dash thirty-nine is, is another item. It's number O.
Dash forty.
So it's, it's just dash forty.
Okay.
Okay, so we have a motion by Mrs. Storey, a second by Mr. Messina to approve resolution, resolution number twenty-two slash twenty-three dash forty. That covers both the termination and the, the new contract. All in favor?
Aye.
Student board member?
Aye.
And the chair says aye. Mr. Coolman, again, congratulations on your positive evaluation, and we look forward to working with you and moving forward on things.
Congratulations, Mr. Coolman.
Congratulations.
Okay, we are down to our last item before we act as a legislative body. It's letter O, resolution number twenty-two slash twenty-three dash thirty-nine. Mr. Peschek.
Thank you, Mr. Jensen. At our previous meeting, we had Mr. Jesse Landry with us, and he reviewed a couple of different bond-related items. This item is the prepayment, excuse me, sorry, I have to get this up here. In 2018, we took out over twenty-two million dollars in lease revenue bonds to complete construction projects here in the district. We had an income and revenue shortfall, and we had a number of projects that were already active at the time. Those bonds were secured by a number of ways. One was, basically, we took a second mortgage out on a high school. And the other is, we're paying all of those, not a second mortgage, excuse me, it was used as collateral. We're using community facilities district monies right now to repay those. We've reached a point now where we now are authorized to prepay off these lease revenue bonds. The district has set aside facilities-only money, it's not general fund money, it is specific for facilities, to repay these. And by prepaying these now, instead of continuing to pay for these for a couple more decades, we'll save millions and millions of dollars, over nine million dollars, which we can then, over time, use that CFD money on our schools on an annual basis, we'll have income to do projects. But the board's commitment a couple of years ago when we took these out was to repay those as soon as the time came, and the time has come. So this evening, we're asking for the board's permission to repay, prepay back this lease revenue bonds. Thank you.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Messina, second by Dr. Moore to approve resolution number twenty-two slash twenty-three dash thirty-nine. All in favor?
Aye.
Student board member?
Aye.
And the chair says aye. Excellent.
You know, when we, when we passed that, you know, I was, I was a bulldog, right? And, and I'm, and it's just been on my head ever since we did that, and I saw money coming in and go, okay, when are we going to pay those? We made a promise, so thank you. Thank you for making that happen.
Thank you, Ralph. Okay, we're going to move on now. The board will proceed with its agenda item to act as the legislative body of CFD number twenty-three dash one. For agenda items ten A and ten B, the board, having formed a CFD number two-zero-two-three dash one by adoption of resolution number twenty-two slash twenty-three dash thirty-four on March 15th, 2023, is acting as a legislative body of CFD number two-zero-two-three dash one. Agenda item number ten A is to conduct the second reading of ordinance number LB-two-two slash two-three dash one.
The first, the first reading of ordinance number LB-twenty-two slash twenty-three dash one took place at the March 15th, two, 2023 meeting, board meeting. Tonight, the board will be conducting the second reading of the ordinance. A copy of the proposed ordinance has been posted on the district's website and has been available at district offices, offices for inspection by interested members of the public prior to the proposed adoption.
Do I have a motion to present the second reading of ordinance number LB-two-two slash two-three dash one by title only?
I move that ordinance number LB-twenty-two slash twenty-three dash one be presented by reading of the title only, and that the clerk forego the reading of the entire ordinance.
Do we have a second? Motion by Mr. Webb, second by Dr. Moore. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Student board member?
Aye.
And the chair says aye. Thank you.
The title of ordinance number LB-twenty-two slash twenty-three dash one reads as follows. Ordinance of Committee Facilities District number twenty, twenty-three dash one of the William S. Hart Union High School Districts authorizing the levy of special tax within Community Facilities District twenty-two-three dash one.
Thank you, board. We're halfway done with this. Now we move on to the ordinance adoption. Agenda item number ten B is to adopt ordinance number LB-twenty-two slash twenty-three dash one. Do I have a motion to adopt ordinance number LB-twenty-two dash twenty-three dash one?
I move to adopt ordinance number LB-twenty-two slash twenty-three dash one.
There a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Storey, uh, Mrs. Storey. Motion by Mr. Webb. All in favor to adopt this ordinance?
I have a question.
Aye. Student board member?
Uh, no, Mr. Messina has a question.
I have a question. I know, I know you're rolling. Mr. Peschek, for those who really don't know what a CFD is, can you give a very short, concise description?
For a community facilities district or Melrose, we negotiate mitigation agreements and establish community facilities districts, working directly with property developers as they're building new developments with, within the valley. The new students and families that come into our community, we have to have facilities and infrastructure, and there are costs associated with supporting all of those new homes. And so the Community Facilities District allows the developers to pay for some of those infrastructure things. They develop the CFD district, and the homeowners help to pay for some of their own infrastructure over a period of time.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So I'll restate again the motion by Mr. Webb, second by Mrs. Storey to adopt ordinance number LB-twenty-two dash slash twenty-three dash one. All in favor?
Aye.
Student board member?
Aye.
And the chair says aye. Excellent. The board will no longer be acting as the legislative body of CFD number twenty, twenty-three dash one for the remaining items on the agenda, and we'll now move into the consent calendar. And we do have two speaker cards on the consent calendar. The first one is Diane Zimmerman. Is Diane here? Okay, so Diane is left. Our second speaker is Cindy.
Cindy, let's, Cindy, why don't you come up right now?
Okay, Cindy, may, you may go ahead and begin.
I would like to talk about the importance of factual and unbiased history education in our schools, and specifically address the issue of biased and misleading information in the AP History Book Stories by a Nation. This book presents a one-sided view of history that distorts the truth and causes the students to view events and people in a biased matter, manner. One example of this is the book's portrayal of the death of Michael Brown. The book presents a biased view that portrays Brown as an innocent victim of police brutality, while downplaying this involvement in a strong armed robbery and assault, which led to the initial encounter with Officer Wilson. Investigations by the Department of Justice and St. Louis County prosecuting, yeah, prosecuting's attorney's office found that Brian, that Brown was not surrendering when he was shot, contrary to the media's portrayal. This misinformation caused divisions and unrest in the community. Such biased and misrepresentation of facts in the AP History Book is a cause for concern. It misleads students into thinking that they have learned factual history. To prevent the spread of biased information in our education system, we must be vigilant about the sources of information we rely on, including textbooks. We must ensure that our textbooks are grounded in factual history and do not promote hidden political agendas. We need to ensure that our students are being presented with a balanced view of history that reflects the reality of what has happened in the past. Only then we can hope to learn from the past and build a more just and equitable future. Please consider this when voting on this book.
Cindy, your time's up, thank you.
The kids deserve the truth.
Okay, our next speaker is Diane Zimmerman. Diane, you may begin.
Thank you. The Cultural Landscape, An Introduction to Human Geography, grades nine through twelve, about patterns and processes of Earth's human landscape across Earth's surface. Did any of you know? It is a fact, we are all different shades of one color. Don't laugh, happens to be true. If you look back in history, you will see that the Creator made the color of your skin appropriate to the strength of the sun beaming down on the particular place you were born in. The reason we ended up with sunburn, sunscreen, et cetera, was because we went and decided to move to areas our particular skin pigment was not born to. Fact-checked it out for yourselves. That is, if you have enough of the basic reading, writing, you know, math skills, that you can actually have the ability to check something out for yourself without having your government do it for you. Grade twelve, the new book, it's called Presidential Election Update, American Government Stories of a Nation, updated with information about the 2020 president election. That is absolutely, with multiple choice questions and free response and argumentation questions. Really, you're writing facts about an election that hasn't even been concluded yet. You are putting this into a book to give to the twelfth graders, and you must be privy to a whole lot of information that none of the public is privy to, and probably not even those that are still trying to figure out the 2020 election, and yet you have a curriculum already about the 2020 election that you're going to give to these children. So I'm, I'm pretty sure you're not going to go through with this, because you would be, I'll tell you right now.
Diane, your time's up, thank you.
Thank you. My time will never be up.
Okay, so.
I ain't going anywhere.
On the consent calendar, unless a board member has a question concerning a particular item and asks that it be withdrawn from the consent calendar, the governing board approves all the items at one time.
I got one question. Item number seventy, Agreement for Consulting Services for Melrose. I think, Mr. Peschek, you're probably going to answer this. This is just simply an agreement, they're looking into it. We're not approving any kind of Melrose anything at this point.
No, this is, the country we work in, Jesse Landry and the support that they provide on going to the district.
All right, thank you.
I'll move the consent calendar.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Storey, second by Mr. Messina to approve the consent calendar. All in favor?
Aye.
Student board member?
Aye.
And the chair says aye. Thank you. Okay, we're going to move on to items for future consideration. I remind the board that we do have another board meeting right after this, so stick around. It's going to be a short one.
So my item for future consideration is to cancel the next board item, meeting that we have.
All in favor?
Now, now, let me, oh, we do have a speaker card for items for future consideration.
Rebecca Heineman.
I would like to request a future agenda item that we review the rules for the public and for speakers here at board meetings, so that they are more controlled, that they have something to actually do with the board, with the school, with students, teachers, and classified, and not just general members of the public that they like to attack from the podium and/or verbally attack those that are speaking. And we start following our rules of having people removed, et cetera. That would be lovely, the last meeting to get a little out of control. Also, a future agenda item, I am trying to get my hands on a video for you guys so that maybe the district can watch, and I have it on my phone, just not in my personal use, of the Castaic Prom and watching Mr. Ferry get down with all the students. I think it would be a great promotion for the district, not to mention it's Mr. Ferry. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, items for future consideration, board. Any thoughts, comments, Dr. Moore?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Jensen. In light of the reports that we had tonight on the bell schedules, and seeing that block schedule become permanent, I think at Valencia, following this vote, and seeing block scheduling happen at La Mesa and West Ranch, they've had it for a while, but I would like to get a report on block scheduling, and which of our schools are not on block, which are, and what the outcomes look like for our students in terms of their, not satisfaction, but I guess, academic. I guess academic outcomes and such, or if we have a way to look at that based on block schedule versus not.
All right, if there's no other.
Mr. Jensen, I have something.
Okay.
Mr. Jensen, it is my intention to submit a formal letter of resignation from the William S. Hart Union High School Board with an effective date of May 2, 2023, and I will submit that formal letter to Mr. Coleman, superintendent.
Right.
Does the board have to take action on that? Because.
Maybe we could.
Well, Mr. Webb, I will say that I appreciate all that you've done for the board, and I've enjoyed working with you, and you've made a significant contribution over these past two-plus years, and I appreciate all your efforts and hard work. I know you've put a lot of time into it, and you've been very dedicated, and that's much appreciated, and thank you.
I too want to say thank you, Mr. Webb. Your service is noted and has made an impact and a difference. It will be missed, you will be missed, but we are grateful that you'll still be in this community and actively engaged in other ways. So thank you so much for your contribution to our community.
And you know, I am sorry that you're leaving because I think that you've been a great board member. I think that there was a lot we could have done together, and I'll be, I've got your number, so you're not, can't go that far away.
Yep. Okay, I'd just like to note also that we will be issuing a press release tomorrow in regards to Mr. Webb's resignation that he just announced tonight. We'll have a press release drawn up that we'll issue to the press tomorrow on April 20th, and so we'll move forward in that capacity. Okay, it's 9:54, we're open to an adjournment.
I'd like to adjourn this meeting in the memory of the Holocaust victims and also in honor of Mr. Webb's service to the district.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion by Mrs. Storey, second by Dr. Moore to adjourn the meeting at 9:55 in memory of Mr. Webb and all of his efforts to the district and for the Holocaust victims.
Which were six million Jews and five million non-Jews.
All in favor of that adjournment?
Aye.
Student board member?
Aye.
And the chair says aye. Okay, we are adjourned.
Now we start another meeting.
We have an organization called the William S. Hart Joint School Financing Authority, and we periodically have a board meeting, and we have one tonight. So we're going to be calling that meeting to order right now. Debbie, would you do the roll call?
Mr. Messina?
Here.
Dr. Moore?
Present.
Mrs. Storey?
Here.
Mr. Webb?
Present.
Mr. Jensen?
Present.
Mr. Coleman?
Here.
And Mr. Peschek?
Here.
Okay, we do have a quorum. The next item is to approve the agenda for this meeting tonight.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Messina, second by Mrs. Storey to approve the agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
And the chair says aye. Next, we'll approve the minutes from our regular meeting of December 14, 2022.
Move to approve the minutes from the December 14, 2022 regular meeting.
Regular financial meeting.
Have a second?
Second.
Motion by Dr. Moore, second by Mr. Messina to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of 12:14:22. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And the chair says aye. Okay, we have one item, a special item. A member of the audience, however, a member of the audience may address the board and items listed on the agenda by completing a speaker card. You'll be called upon to make your comments at the time the item is discussed. Please use the microphone and state your name. Comments will only be heard regarding items on the special meeting agenda, and the board president will limit your comments to two minutes. We do have a speaker card, Matt Funicello. Matt, would you like to come up, please? Matt, you may begin.
Good evening. My main comments on this is coming from a place of fiscal conservatism. When it comes to bond measures, borrowing money, getting loans for, you know, whatever the needs may be at the time, it is your fiduciary responsibility to pay that off as soon as financially possible. Thankfully, we're reaching a point in time where we're paying off that loan. You know, as a taxpayer, I think we can all agree that, you know, millions of dollars in debt is not something we like to hold above our heads, and I'd like to know if there's any information that the board can relay to us taxpayers as to why it took this long and as to the process of, you know, paying it back. I'd appreciate it. I'm not trying to make accusations or anything like that. I just want to know the process, but again, I want to address my relief that it's being paid, so thank you.
Thank you. Our action item is resolution number JSFA22/23-1, which is the direction and authorization to prepay the lease revenue bonds. Mr. Peschek.
Yes, Mr. Jensen and members of the Finance Committee Authority. This is, the Finance Authority must also take action as we did when we authorized the district to act on behalf and go out and secure the lease revenue bonds. We have to work cooperatively with the agenda item you just approved on the general board meeting, and the authority also has to authorize that action. Once the authority authorizes this action, we will begin the process to pay those off, and those will be paid off within approximately the next 90 days. There's obviously a process that we have to follow, and this is the first opportunity per the terms of the original lease agreement. This spring is the first time that we can actually take this action, so I appreciate the board's diligence and support in helping us save as much money as possible so that we're acting in a fiduciary, responsible manner, and using that money is the best way we can.
Thank you, Ralph. Appreciate your efforts in this regard, too. So this is an action item?
Move to approve the resolution number JSFA22/23-1.
Second.
Motion by Dr. Moore, second by Mr. Messina to approve resolution number JSFA22/23-1. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The chair says aye. Thank you. We can move forward with that, which is great. So now it is time to adjourn at 10 o'clock.
A real?
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Storey, second by Dr. Moore to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
And the chair says aye. We are adjourned.